All right, I would like to recall this regular open meeting of the Board of Education on October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five to order at seven oh three P. M. If we could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and next we would like to recognize that it is LGBTQIA+ History Month, and I believe we have a student, Janaye Jones, here who's gonna talk to us.
Hello. My name is Janaye Jones. I'm a senior year at MRH. Just a disclaimer, I'm talking about myself and my experiences. As a queer youth in Missouri who attends a school like MRH, it has been uplifting to see how our district supports the LGBTQIA+ community. At this point in time, it's crucial to show support to our queer and trans youth. I believe that MRH has displayed an outstanding initiative to achieve this. These resolutions that the district has adopted not only securing our safety and for our LGBTQ students, but dismantled the wall built by Missouri legislation to block the rights of queer and trans Missourians. This resolution has encouraged me and my girlfriend as queer students to feel safe and uplifted to join student organizations like PALB and voice my opinions in school matters that impact our large LGBTQ student body. Coming to the school was scary because it was new. I hadn't yet found out who I was, and I had been living in a hostile environment where bullying, slander, and teasing against LGBTQ plus people were prominent attributes. This, as you can tell, is not a good catalyst for any person to grow in. I soon grew to become a product of my environment, participating in the bullying and slander to create a perfect cover to hide who I truly was as a queer student. I thought it was only me. Many of students from this school felt that they needed to hide as well. I remember one moment in particular. My friends and I were walking to our next class, and we were talking about sexuality. Within the conversation, she revealed to me that she doesn't tell people that she's gay because she's scared of what people will do. This shocked me. I wasn't the only one hiding. But the story has a happy ending. After wrestling practice one day, my mom told me that I'd be transferring to a school called Maplewood, Richmond Heights. I'd never heard of this school before, but before I knew it, it was my first day. I'd submerged my outgoing personality to not reveal too much information about myself, but that didn't work here. Everybody came at me with questions that I didn't have answers to. Then somebody asked me, "What's your sexuality?" I was stunned. I didn't know what to say. All my life, I had kept it a secret, but in that day, something in me urged me to tell the truth. I told her that I was interested in women and waited. Then I was swept with love and acceptance, something that I never knew that I would be able to receive. But I was able to here at MRH. I've been supported by teachers, counselors, students, and coaches, and it has meant the whole world to me. I know this sounds like I'm sponsored by MRH, which you should sponsor me because I would look great in MRH. But I was able to grow here and become proud of the eighteen-year-old woman that I am today, and all I can do is thank our staff and students for that. Thank you for showing me that I can be loved, I can love myself, and I can be who I am here at MRH. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have public forum. All right, while I wait for the list, I just wanted to remind everyone to please keep your comments to three minutes. I also wanted to remind everyone that we cannot discuss individually identifiable student or personnel matters in open session. If you have a concern relating to individually identifiable student or personnel matters, you are welcome to submit it to the board in writing or through the grievance process. All right, so first up, we have Anne-Louise Schmidt.
Hi, I'm Anne-Louise Schmidt, parent of two high school kids. I wanted to say thank you for your commitment to equity, especially at the last board meeting. And as we are getting into budget directive season, I've come to learn that other districts have budgets that go directly towards supporting educational equity. I'm here asking if you would demonstrate your commitment to equity by beginning to give some money to an equity budget. Here's how that can be used. The budget could support student and adult affinity groups, DEI speakers and programming, professional development for staff, stipends for staff serving on the Equity and Action Team, which is consistent with other subcommittees. We all know how important it is to invest in equity work because there's this anti-woke, anti-DEI agenda going around, which is so frustrating because it's just plain bullying, saying, "No, you can't exist as you are with equitable treatment," just because somebody says you can't exist. And we all know that no one likes bullying. I mean, just the other day, a person called out one of our black female principals over Facebook. Nobody's perfect, but you don't go straight to bullying as soon as you take issue with something someone said. You don't compare somebody to a Korean dictator. Your dialogue and communication directly hold each other accountable. Part of growing into maturity is learning that things are not all or nothing, and that there is always space to dialogue further, to work, to solve conflict together. This takes time, but look at what we all miss out on when we don't take this time. The way forward is always through relationship, not through bullying action. I thought a big part of what we do here at MRH was restorative circles. What happened to sitting around and talking restoratively? Conversations might not be easy or comfortable, but we don't need to jump to quietly circulating petitions. We really can do better than that. Here's another bullying story. Dr. Jamison was hired. She asked for accountability for student learning that had not been present before. This accountability produced test scores that went up in the district. Yet, parents and staff who had had access and power before Dr. J came along no longer had that in, and they got mad and started bullying her. I've heard from two separate places outside our neighborhood, people saying, "Oh, you're in the MRH school district? I've heard about how the superintendent is being bullied over there." Can y'all imagine what would happen if our superintendent left? And this narrative going around that MRH bullies their superintendent is keep going, like, you think it's gonna be easy to get another quality superintendent or any other staff? And our kids are watching. This is probably my main point. We are setting an example for our children by how to address and communicate issues. They will follow us when they get older. Is this the way we want them to learn how to act from us?
Next, we have Gina LaRose.
Hello, my name is Gina LaRose. I have three children in the district, two at the elementary school and one at the middle school. First of all, I want to thank you all for the personal investment that you've made to our district. I know that serving on the board is demanding and unpaid work, and I truly appreciate your commitment. Y'all are constantly up way past my bedtime on these Thursday nights. I'm here tonight to talk about money. I was encouraged by the board's commitment to improve teacher pay and by the taxpayers' overwhelming support last spring to make that possible. I see there are NEA members here, and obviously, they deserve a whole pile of credit, so thank you there. I have long been troubled by MRH's salaries' low ranking in the region and truly appreciate the course correct. During discussions, Director Matts has asked to prioritize pay for certified staff over support staff, pushed for a higher goal of funds to hold in reserve, and spent more than an hour last June proposing many cuts to eliminate line items which included investments in people, including professional development and staff support. Director Colbert has proposed limiting professional development funding to only what is legally required, and questioned the purchase of iPads for K through second graders, reasoning that they don't even really know how to use their fingers yet. President Biden is quoted as saying, "Don't tell me your values. Show me your budget, and I'll tell you your values." I hear Directors Matts and Colbert frequently calling for what they say as responsible stewardship of taxpayer money. But responsible stewardship is not necessarily about saving money, and it's certainly not about padding the fund balance to a wildly high percentage as forty-eight percent. When I did my research, ChatGPT, it told me that an unusual range for the fund balance for a public school district is somewhere between twenty and twenty-five percent. I believe that responsible stewardship is investing in students, teachers, and staff. I know that many of you share this view. Dr. Jamison, President Schmidt, Director Kaufman, and Vice President Francois rightly pushed back on cuts that they felt would harm morale and culture, two areas that we know are already struggling in our district based on recent surveys. It's disheartening to hear proposals to cut things such as food for trainings and team-building events. In our culture, food brings us together. It's how we celebrate and care for one another. When someone has tragedy strike, we show up with casseroles and DoorDash gift cards. We're Midwesterners. That is how we roll. During the June work session, Mr. Colbert called for a culture of frugality. Mission accomplished. Last year, we heard from teachers resorting to self-funding, crowdsourcing, and thrifting for classroom furnishings and materials, which continues to this day. Support staff has voiced frustrations over pay disparities. The VP of the PALB board last year called for ongoing budgetary support of school as metaphor. And yet, items like the seventh-grade Touch of Nature trip, so central to School as Expedition, have been highlighted by Mr. Matts as something to reconsider. When funds fell short in Dr. Amber Phillips' budget for administrative professional development, Mr. Matts denied any board role. And perhaps, as Dr. Francois suggested at the time, this was not the intent of Mr. Colbert and Mr. Matts, but certainly, it's been the impact. The mindset of scarcity starts at the top and trickles into all areas. I urge the board to reaffirm its values through its budget and to invest not in austerity but into the people who make MRH thrive: our talented, dedicated staff, administrators, and teachers. Thank you.
Next, we have Jennifer Moore.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for your service. I know it's like Anne-Louise said, it's thankless, and I appreciate you, but I do have some things I'd like to say. I'm Jennifer Moore. I live in Richmond Heights. I've been there for fifteen years, I think, and I have a child in the elementary school and one in the high school. I am the daughter of a machinist. My first understanding of solidarity came from the solidarity between members of my father's union. Working-class consciousness was very much my first consciousness, and it's because of that that seeing this union weaponizing against a black woman leader that I find that so painful and that it's dividing our school district. But the divisiveness is nothing new. I was enlightened in my twenties by Howard Zinn's explanation of America's specific approach to racial inequities, where our social elites of early America sought to manufacture racial divisions. Men of property and privilege were in the minority, and they needed mechanisms to divide people who, in concert, might threaten the status quo. Individuals of different skin colors were not sufficient to keep those people apart, so they created diversions. You know what I'm trying to say? I have observed the vitriol in our school district, and it shows the enduring and ongoing impact of this effort. Sometimes, as a white woman, it's hard to see how I'm a part of driving the effort today. I hear words like privilege and patriarchy, and as a working-class, educated white woman, I might think that makes me exempt. As I continue to develop in my personhood, I know unless I am actively working against racism, I'm nourishing it. And to be sure, if certain members of an all-white school board and all-white MRH NEA union executive team are attacking a black leader, I should have some big questions about what's behind all of that, if I'm hearing the full story and the credibility of the storytellers. When I heard that Dr. Jamison finally lost her composure in a meeting, I wonder what provoked it in this instance after years of bullying... Oh, sorry. Our superintendent, what provoked it at this instance after years of bullying and relentless refusal to engage with restorative justice? When I hear that one of the union reps cried during a tense disagreement... Okay, I'll just finish with this quote. "White lady tears might seem not to be a big deal, but they actually are quite dangerous. When white women signal through their tears that they feel unsafe, misunderstood, or attacked, the whole world rises in their defense. The mythic nature of white female vulnerability compels protective impulses to arise in all men regardless of race. We have to do better than that. Our children are watching." That quote is from Brittany Cooper, author of Eloquent Race, I recommend it to you all.
It's Leslie Kois. It's all good. I did it wrong. I did it wrong. Next time. You're gonna get it. Thank you, though, Jenny. Hi, Leslie Kois. I have kiddos at middle school and at the elementary school. And as we enter another budget season, I want to begin by reminding us what's truly on the line. It's our children. My son used to struggle with school, and it was hard for him to find joy and connection. But this year, as a new middle schooler in a building guided by School as Expedition, everything changed. He's thriving. He's curious. He's motivated. He's excited to learn. And that didn't happen by accident. It happened because his teachers, staff, and principal have built a child-centered culture. They show what it's a culture rooted in care, curiosity, and connection. They show what it means to educate the whole child, to see learning as an adventure, and to cultivate joy as a serious academic practice. That is what a culture of excellence looks like. But what I see happening at the board level worries me deeply. Mr. Matts' June twelfth redline cuts, they cut joy. He removed items he labeled ad hoc from team-building events to the coffee that's shared at those gatherings. He eliminated ropes courses and bowling, calling them not good uses of taxpayer resources. But these aren't luxuries. They're how we invest in people who make our schools work, the teachers and staff who build belonging, collaboration, and trust. Dr. Jamison spoke that night about how critical team-building is, especially right now. Recent surveys reveal deep mistrust and division among staff. Our staff of color are telling us they continue to experience microaggressions from white coworkers, and we're seeing it play out. Cutting opportunities to build connection and repair relationships doesn't solve that, it makes it worse. This is what happens when a culture of frugality replaces a culture of excellence. The one million in cuts that Mr. Matts and Mr. Colbert pushed last year continue to show up in tangible ways. Not enough bus drivers, limited funds for newsletters, micromanaging field trips, shrinking budgets for PD and team buildings. We're not just cutting dollars, we're cutting care. Thank you, President Schmidt, Vice President Francois, and members Kaufman and Miller, for continually standing up for that culture during that meeting, for reminding this board that people, not numbers, make this district work. Board member Kaufman said something that night that stuck with me: happy teachers. That's what taxpayers want. That's what we want to pay for. We want happy teachers. And I agree, because happy teachers create thriving classrooms. Supported staff create safe, connected schools, and that is what child-centered education truly requires. President Schmidt offered a wise and collaborative suggestion to keep these community care events in place this year and gather feedback from staff before making future decisions. That's exactly the kind of leadership and compromise our district needs right now. Ask the experts, the teachers, the support staff, the administrators, the people who see the effects of your one million-dollar cuts up close every day. They know what's working and what's needed to rebuild a healthy culture. If we continue down this path of austerity, we risk becoming an adult-centered district that we are regionally becoming known as, one that prioritizes ideology, image, and control over care, creativity, and belonging. Fiscal stewardship should never come at the expense of our humanity. You can't cut your way to joy. You can't redline your way to trust and repair. If we truly want to center children, we must invest in the people and programs that help them and their teachers flourish. This is what a culture of excellence looks like. Thank you.
Next, we have Dana Eisen.
Good evening. Tone policing is a microaggression tactic that disproportionately affects black women by invalidating their emotions and shifting the focus from the content of their message to the delivery. This behavior is a form of silencing rooted in the angry black woman stereotype, which portrays black women as aggressive and hostile. What is the angry black woman stereotype? One that black women appear hostile, aggressive, loud, and toxic, all terms used to label black women professionals as overly assertive. Black women are then forced to alter their language and behavior to fit a white-centered norm and avoid triggering white fear. I'd like to read a letter that I wrote to the board. I'm sure they already know this, but I'd like to read it to the community. "I'm writing to express my deep disappointment and concern over the efforts to undermine the work and reputation of Dr. Jamison, a leader who has consistently elevated our district. Her accomplishments include improving policies, staff raises, and renewed mission have positioned our school among top in the region. The campaign to remove her is rooted not in job performance, but rather in her identity as a black woman who refuses to conform to unspoken and exclusionary Maplewood way. As a woman of color who has served this district since 2013, I have witnessed how racism continues to simmer beneath the surface. I saw this through daily experiences of staff and students. People of color, whether in leadership or support roles, are often targets. It is exhausting, traumatizing, and unacceptable. What enables these continued attacks on the character and presence of people of color in our district? Part of the answer lies in what many of us recognize as white tears, the emotional manipulation of some white women that they use in institutions where whiteness and white femininity is dominant. This dynamic is not new. Historically, white women's tears have weaponized against black individuals, leading to community-wide harm, job loss, and reputation destruction. In our district, we have seen white women use perceived fragility and emotion to deflect accountability, inflict psychological harm, and silence the voices of women of color. These actions, whether subtle or overt, occur in meetings, complaints, and private conversations that shape public decisions. They reinforce a dangerous message that black women are not worthy of empathy, must constantly defend themselves, and are labeled aggressive or hostile when they do. This pattern is not only emotional draining, it is racist. Dr. Jamison is experiencing this same pattern. She is being punished not for any failure but for leading with integrity and authenticity as a black woman in a space that has not historically welcomed it. Her success challenges a power structure that has grown too comfortable with centering whiteness in leadership and influence. I urge the board to ask difficult but necessary questions. What precedent does this set for current and future leaders of color in this district, and how will you address the broader culture that continues to undermine, mistreat, and push out women of color? We do not need more statements of solidarity. We need action. If this district and community truly values equity, you will stand by Dr. Jamison, investigate the racial dynamics behind this campaign and others, and commit to dismantling the systems, both structurally and interpersonal, that continue to harm the women of color in our community."
All right, is there Jonathan Dickman?
My name is Jonathan Dickman. I grew up here in Richmond Heights, and I've been back here for thirteen years. I have four kids. Two of them have been through the system, one who's a sixth grader and one who is a first grader. I have been a rock climber for over thirty years. My kids have gotten into this as well. I've heard that there's a proposal to, basically to approve an already-funded climbing wall that would go in at the middle school. I just want to speak in my support of that. My kids have all climbed. My sixth grader, who will be moving to middle school next year, has complained about the inadequacy of the climbing wall that went in at the elementary, and is very excited about the prospect of a wall that would actually give her a decent climbing thing. I've also been involved with the local scouts, both as a child through the PAC and through the troop, and again, from my now freshman who was a first grader through eight years, the scout troop. I'm also a certified climbing leader with the local scout troop. We take ourselves outdoors. We're okay to do the outdoor climbing, but having something in our community would be a huge boon to the sport of rock climbing. I find it extremely valuable in my life. My kids find it extremely valuable in theirs. It's an easy skill to learn. It gives them great exercise. And when I was in high school, there was none really available at all. And it's been great to see it flourish and bloom. I just want to speak in support of, again, approving the wall that has already been funded. Thank you.
Next, we have Bethany Nobe.
My name is Bethany Nobe. I am an alumni. I have served in the district for seven years as a high school math teacher and girl soccer coach, and I am the MRH NEA treasurer. I care deeply about the MRH community, which is what led me to volunteer my time as an NEA building rep and now as the treasurer. Teacher retention has been at the forefront of the district and the MRH NEA's goals. The union's goal of retaining teachers is done so through improving working conditions. Our union of educators cannot improve working conditions if we are not able to surface concerns that result in timely, productive solutions. There must be space for disagreement without it being taken personally. The union cannot do our jobs as advocates when administrators raise their voices at us, intimidate, or retaliate against us. Teachers will not stick around if their concerns are not addressed and there is an environment where they feel unable to speak up. Many teachers wanted to be here tonight to speak but were concerned about retaliation. Our MRH community deserves the best for their children. These issues must be fixed before there's another mass exodus of teachers. Thank you.
Next, we have Joe Sossell.
Good evening. My name is Joe Sossell. I'm the career connections teacher, varsity basketball coach at MRH High School. January fourth, it'll be five years that I've been in the district this time around. It's really a privilege to do the work I get to do with students, and I really feel fortunate that I never get the Sunday Blues. Like, I'm generally always happy to come to work. I get a front row seat to do things that, like, it's a privilege. I appreciate that opportunity to do meaningful work each day. So, here's the thing. My first year in education was nineteen eighty-eight, eighty-nine. My first year in education was 1988-89. That was 37 years ago. So, I've worked in five different districts as a teacher and administrator. Also did extensive work in my time as a business owner with dozens of school district central offices, hundreds of educators. So, to paraphrase, I'm one of the oldest people in the room, and I've seen some things. I've seen some things. So, from my point of view, I took the opportunity to come out of the gym where my kids are practicing and I'd come up here for one purpose. It's to state my confidence in our NEA leadership, including but not limited to Annie Rutherford, Rich McCollum, Gage Dotson, Bethany Novy. They're among the most talented, committed, and selfless people I've ever had the privilege of working with or knowing. I really value their integrity, their selfless work on behalf of educators in the district. The collective bargaining process made my family's life better. Made the life of a lot of other people better as well, but probably most importantly, really had an impact on the lives of younger teachers in positive ways that can really strengthen the district permanently long after I'm done with my time here. It's really a tremendous thing. Their presence right in the NEA allows me to speak up where I see we have a chance to improve. I feel like I can do that without being concerned about anything that might happen because I speak up. Based on what I've observed, the way I've been treated, I've not always felt that I was in a trusting environment for the five years I was here, and that is improving because of their leadership primarily. Their leadership and the NEA's presence makes me better, and I'm really confident it makes us better as a whole. So, the school board, as our elected leaders, really encourage you to support their leadership and the work they're doing. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Madeline Burzon.
Hi, everyone. My name is Madeline Burzon. I am a fifth, sixth ELA teacher over at the middle school, as well as a member of the NEA. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, Mrs. Heather Jaber, and Mrs. Taryn Williams, all over at the elementary school as well. Six hours ago, I was really trying hard to convince myself that this was none of my business being here this evening, and I had no reason to be here. Obviously, I was not doing great at convincing myself because I'm here. I feel pretty uncomfortable with a grievance being filed on behalf of the entire NEA before members outside of the executive team. That decisions were being made out before members outside of the executive team were made aware of the situation. I really want to emphasize that two things can be true at once. I am so grateful for the advocacy of the NEA and helping make MRH a place where students want to learn and teachers want to work. I am also grateful for Dr. Jamison's dedication to pushing through all of the challenges she's inherited and making leaps and bounds at improving the MRH community. For the first time in a while, we have a consistent K-8 curriculum. We have substantial new systems of support for students. We have really exciting technology coming in to make learning more equitable for our students, and I'm very excited about some of those opportunities, and I hope that momentum continues forward. Unfortunately, I feel like some of our conversations have lost sight of our larger purpose. I really want to emphasize that we are here in the service of children. We are wasting energy when we could be giving children 100% of our focus. Every day, I'm teaching my students the importance of empathy, mindfulness, and that we need to hear each other's perspectives in order to restore harm and solve problems. It is a genuine shame to me that as adults, we are not able to put those teachings into practice. Thank you so much, everyone, for being here tonight.
Nikki Holm, next.
Jenny, before we continue, I just want to say something real quick. Usually, there's a mass exodus after a public comment, but I think there's a misconception here about the dynamic of the board and the whole of the board. And I know this is going to be kind of weird coming from me, but it's disheartening when I hear community members, for whatever reason, imply that some of my colleagues might have less than altruistic reasons for doing what they do. I, in my personal experience, have never found anybody on this board to act with any type of malice, or at least, you know, when it comes to schooling, budgeting. There are different ways to get to a destination, and I think that we should encourage a variety of thought and a variety of opinions. And I do appreciate the community's concern about certain programs, but I also would like them to also consider that a lot goes into all of the stuff that we do, and there are new easy fixes to some of our problems.
Thank you.
Nick Holm, 3525 Commonwealth. I have two kids in the district, seventh grade and third grade. Good evening to the board, MRH admin, and MRH teachers and the community. Eight-hour workday, 40-hour work week, competitive wages, paid vacation, FMLA, paid sick leave, unemployment, employer-based health coverage. I could go on. What do these things have in common? All of these can in part or in full be attributed to the labor movement. Unions brought us these improved working conditions and rights. As a proud former union member who started a union, filed countless paperwork with Missouri Board of Mediation, and bargained collectively, I love unions. In 2023, I was attending an MRH BOE roundtable at the Masonry Institute down the road, where we discussed how to raise teacher salaries back to a competitive level. And I told anyone who would listen that there was an easy answer, let them form a union. This is the only mechanism to provide them the power and leverage needed to get back to competitive salaries. Power and leverage, critical tools that the MRH NEA union has introduced into our schools. That power and leverage has been used for good, but can also be wielded like a weapon with a particular end in mind. That power and leverage was used to get substantive salary increases, additional planning time, and compensation for extra duties for our teachers. I would ask you to reflect on that power and leverage and whether it was weaponized this week. I'm an outspoken advocate for MRH teachers and an even more fierce supporter of unions. What I cannot get behind is the weaponization of union power and leverage as a means to a particular end. Work on union business like education is often thankless and tiring, and I admire those that have the stomach to engage in it, that that work elicits our passions. In the countless hours I've spent in bargaining sessions, communication meetings, internal affairs interviews, I'm not proud to say that I've shouted and I've cursed, and I've been on the receiving end of much worse than that. When you're bargaining with people's livelihoods, tensions rise and tempers escalate. After months and months of microaggressions, underhanded slights, bullying, refusal to engage in reflection or repair, and blatant disrespect, man, I feel for our superintendent and teachers of color. But we're all human, and humans are flawed and imperfect beings. So, what's the correct approach when a party is aggrieved? Punitive is an option. Let's punish the hell out of somebody who made a mistake. Teach them a real lesson. Is that how we do things in MRH? Do we want it to be? No. We should engage authentically in a restorative process that focuses on repairing harm and rebuilding relationships, which are the foundation of the bridges we build here in our district. To our teachers in attendance and watching tonight, first, you're amazing, and we love all of you. I want to honor that there is space for you to be thrilled about the successes we've had, and also wish for continued change and growth. There is space to both want growth in your leaders and also want to pursue change in collaborative and restorative way, rather than adversarial and destructive way. Use your voices. When your union leadership files a grievance before they've met and discussed it with all the dues-paying members, ask all the questions. Does that represent how you want issues to be handled? Is that what's the best model for our students or just what's best for the few in power? To the board, I would ask that you recall the mission, vision, and core values of our district. What makes more sense, restorative or punitive solutions? Act and decide as if our students were there with you, listening and watching. Thank you for your attention, and thank you for your service.
Before I say anything, I just want to reiterate, "fund the Rockwall," please. Second, yes. All right. I was here one month ago at the last board meeting to speak about the persistent issue of racial discrimination and microaggressions within the MRH district. That experience was both empowering and encouraging, as it felt like the board and even the student leadership were open to any and all solutions to what I described as an emergency. I hope this work will continue and that we will all, parents included, be as proactive as our time and energy allows to make our district better in this way. The reason I'm here today is both surprising to me and frustrating. I hadn't planned on attending today, much less to speak again, but I find myself here one month after speaking out against racism and discrimination to defend our leadership from what looks a lot like, to me, like racism. I sincerely hope that you don't need me, a white man, to educate you on the experiences of Black women in a country where white supremacy is literally written into the Constitution. We see it everywhere in our culture. Be capable and confident, but don't shine too brightly. Be positive and happy, but don't laugh too loudly or be too effusive in your joy, like our former vice president. And don't you dare get angry, or you'll be subjected to the most punishing stereotype we can invent for you, as we dismiss you for being an angry Black woman. I believe that this is exactly what is taking place right now in this district. Leadership in any organization can make mistakes and communicate in a way that is not serving the people that they are leading. And I want any teacher who can hear me right now to know that I fully stand behind their right to be treated with respect, dignity, and compassion. But imagine, being held to the impossible standard I just described for you while also weathering a campaign of over 100 all-white families to have you ousted from your job, while having lies told about you having misappropriated funds, lies which were promptly forgotten after the political campaign that was predicated on the back of them had concluded. Imagine remaining calm while being told in public by this board that the funding cuts they had very much voted on and approved, which had resulted in a feeling of being unsupported, had not in fact happened. Imagine your frustration boiling over and that being used as a weapon, and a continuing years-long campaign to punish you despite the huge successes you've accomplished for our students. Based on the small amount of history that I know, I'm fairly certain that some members of the leadership of the MRH NEA would not want to be held to that same standard, while the important and crucial work that they have in fact accomplished for our teachers goes unacknowledged. As far as I'm concerned, teachers have the hardest and the most important job in the entire world, and I would never want to be perceived as invalidating their lived experiences in favor of leadership. I hope that the MRH NEA would take the time to get a full picture from our staff, including staff of color, before taking any further action against our leadership, but I have to confess that I am skeptical that this is a good-faith attempt to resolve differences. I implore their leadership to prove me wrong, and for more teachers who want change, growth, and repair with the superintendent, but don't want to continue to work for it in an adversarial and destructive way, to raise their voices and ask for a truly restorative process. Thank you.
Next, we have Owen Dietrich. Are you the, are you all three talking?
Austin, you want us to go up there with him?
Whatever you want to do. If you want to, you can. I was going to say. For support, if you want.
Good evening. My name's Owen Dietrich. I want to thank the school board and our community for supporting the new track and our new field for Prop B. I also want to thank my coach for this, like, for making this season so much fun. This field has just been incredible, and it's just, it's been an amazing opportunity. In fact, I kind of feel that the field's my younger sibling because my dad spent more time with it this summer than me. Anyways, MRH students deserve first-class facilities, and that's exactly what we have now. Fun fact, we haven't had a winning record in soccer since 2017. The facts don't lie, and look at us now. We are double-digit wins, and we have a winning record. I'm really proud of it, and I'm grateful for what everyone's done here, and I want to thank our athletes, our community, and everything else. Thank you.
Yep. So, good evening. My name is Austin Kralma, senior. And when I began my freshman year, I remember going out in that field and hearing, like, horror stories of all the holes and the bumps and whatnot. And when we would run around the track for conditioning, like, the, kind of the outskirts of the field, you would hear people screaming from the front, like, just warning people of the holes that are coming up so they didn't fall and roll an ankle or something like that. And since then, I was under the impression that I wouldn't see a new field or an improved one in my high school career, but I am, I'm very appreciative and thankful for the fact that I'm able to play on one, and I'm excited to see how this field will continue to improve when I leave next year. And, or this year, I mean. And yesterday and today, I gathered some, like, comments and good things the team had to say about the new field. It was mainly just improved since last year, like, comments about the quality of the field, but people really loved the scoreboard. They were really excited about the new goals that we got. And overall, it's a massive improvement from the old field, and I'm very thankful that everyone, for everyone that could make it possible. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Francis. I want to start by saying thank you to the board on behalf of the team. I hope you know that all your hard work has an impact. We truly appreciate the work you put into making our school a better place, especially when it directly impacts the students. At home, the soccer team has a 5-1 record. The atmosphere at home games feels so lively because of the new changes, and I'm sure the spectators feel the same. This year, we had a really fun blue versus white game that brought a lot of people from the community. The improvements that the area that were made this school year have truly made our school a more inviting place, not only for the students, but for the community as a whole. The new field is the centerpiece that can be seen as you drive by our wonderful school. It represents how bright the future can be, and I'm glad I was here to witness it. Thank you.
I think that concludes our public forum. Thank you, as always, for everyone coming and sharing your thoughts with us. All right. Next, we have consent agenda. Make it a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there any discussion? Call those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? All right. Next, we have student communications. We have our PAL board report.
Hello. She has my slides up. Here we go. Hello, everybody. I'm Vera Mantesis. I'm the president of our council advisory leadership board, and this is our board report. So, I first wanted to start on our work on our long-term focus, which we introduced at the last board meeting, which is on a sense of belonging and what a sense of belonging looks like for our MRH students and community. So, we began for the past three months gathering data on what a sense of belonging looks like to students through all of the schools. We are currently working on planning monthly public forums to increase student voice, including diverse perspectives, not just the people that are in positions of leadership, in PAL or in student council, but for all of our students, no matter what schools they come from. No matter what schools they come from, they're able to, they should be able to attend these monthly public forums and voice therapy meetings. And this is also a prolonged focus that will be focusing on the entire year, allowing clubs to digest multiple issues while still looking at sense of belonging and voting equity for all students. So, next is our research. We continue to dissect the climate and culture data that was shared by Mr. Estrada. Additionally, my vice president, Noe S. Lora, and I attended with Ms. Huffman a Character Plus leadership workshop, where we learned that a school's core values have impacts on our students, staff, and community. We also had a meeting with Students for Social Justice and Women Who Look Ahead, and we talked about starting a collaborative effort to launch a Black Student Union in the high school. So, we are going to include that in months to come, working with those other organizations to make sure that we're getting as much voice as possible in what we present to the Board of Education every month. We also met with the middle school PAL board, and we're diving into those asks surrounding mental health resources, more advisory time, and opportunities to connect with students and staff in future months. They also talked about prioritizing each student having a trusted adult, which I think increases sense of belonging very, very much. So, that was our research. And additionally, our asks of this month are firstly, an ice machine for student use, which I'll get into in a little bit. And then, we also wanted to renew last year, 2024-2025, asks, which were, our top three were acquiring an athletic trainer, prioritizing equitable beyond-the-bell connections, and expanding extracurricular activities, our opportunities and activities. We wanted to renew those top three because that's what we wanted to carry into this year as we focus on that sense of belonging, and we decided that those all contributed to that very much. Firstly, for our students, an ice machine. The convenience for on-demand ice every day is, should be prioritized for the board. Improved hydration is improved general health, and we also get quit calling for injuries on that. So, there's a lot of benefits of having an ice machine that is accessible for students so they don't have to go through our staff or administration, which takes so they don't have to go through our staff or administration, which takes quite a bit longer to get access to ice. So, an ice machine would be very, very beneficial. Additionally, an athletic trainer. We went over this last year as one of our asks, but an athletic trainer for the school, instead of just hiring them one by one for games, but actually hiring them to be a member of the MRH staff would provide us with injury prevention care for all of our athletes. It would provide immediate and appropriate onsite care for injuries at our sporting games, at our soccer games, our volleyball games, our track meets. And it would provide us with strategies for rehabilitation in case of injuries. The students would feel safer if they had an athletic trainer on the staff, somebody that they could go to, somebody that they could trust to take care of them and provide them with the care that they deserve. And additionally, just some research into beyond-the-bell and extracurricular activities. We looked at what the Department of Education and the National Center for Education Statistics said, and they both agree with us that extracurriculars promote a sense of belonging more than a lot of other things at the school because it allows students and staff to build connections outside of school hours, to do these clubs, to participate in things that they like and enjoy, and we really, really hope that the Board of Education sees their value as well. And additionally, for our community, an ice machine can be used during community events like speech and debate tournaments and choir competitions, as well as track meets if needed. An athletic trainer, the high-quality care provided by a permanent trainer on staff shows compassion, and a lack of a healthcare professional at games puts us at a game-day disadvantage. And, well, we all want to win, and an athletic trainer would contribute to students feeling more confident and safe while they're playing. Additionally, beyond-the-bell and extracurricular opportunities provide community engagement at events like the cross-country car wash, student council-themed games, or the Spian food drives. All of these things provide opportunities for our communities to come together and see what the students have to show. All of these fundraisers provide an opportunity for the community to come and support the school, and they should be prioritized in funding. Additionally, an ice machine and athletic trainer for our health, it's very, very obvious that an ice machine would be very beneficial to our students. Additionally, 90% of our student athletes currently report injuries while participating in sports, and there are 202 students that participate in sports at MRH High School. All, each one of those students would benefit with an athletic trainer that they could work with throughout the year, build a relationship with, that would increase their feeling of safety. For our people, all of our asks benefit stakeholders in the MRH community. It increases that happiness and well-being that strengthens that sense of belonging that the PAL board prioritizes, and we need MRH to feel like home. Hashtag MRH family. If Mr. Sossel was still here, he would love that. And finally, for our resources, allocating resources to asks that benefit students particularly show that the Board of Education really prioritizes student voice. Contributing to an equitable future for our community is an important use of funding. And also, relieving stress on staff currently would be achieved by some of our asks. For example, the athletic trainer duties are currently performed by nurses, teachers, and coaches, so it would relieve some of that stress on our staff. And staff is needed now to access ice for students. If the students had an ice machine, we wouldn't constantly be bothering Ms. Huffman to get us ice. Thank you so, so much. Are there any questions I can answer at this time?
That was my question. Do we have a, we have an estimate on it?
I did a little bit of Goodewing, and I'm not an ice machine expert, but, but, wait, I'm trying to remember the number. I think it was, I actually don't want to say a number in case I'm wrong.
I think Dr. Dietrich might know.
Dr. Dietrich?
So, we've actually, as part of renovation, next year, in the kitchen, we're very sure I'm going to consider those things. Do I get a sucker for a good commercial one? Students will require, we've got five and six dollars each other.
Is that able to be facing, student-facing ice machine, or is it, is it back in the kitchen?
Have you, are you already planning on incorporating that into your model? Oh, so you are working on that for next year? So, you'll just miss out here.
You can report back success.
Just tell them you convinced us.
Next, it's the next year.
Okay. There we go. All right. I had a question. So, is it, we still have had trouble finding a trainer, or are you guys?
So, that's my first question. We're still having trouble with that?
So, we are, and it's a shortage around the region. Rashad Davenport has identified some individuals, and they are at capacity. He is actually actively looking into a potential athletic trainer to support the district, which was something that was newly shared with him. But the one that he said, hey, we did receive a contract, they basically can provide support for home games, and that one is one that we're putting on pause to see what the other potential opportunity might lead to. So, we are actively looking. It's just a shortage.
Because I think currently, poor Mr. Davenport is our athletic trainer at most events.
Yes, I spoke to him last year.
Okay. So, that's already, so that asked, sorry, so it's already being investigated. Oh, look, we're at two-for-two.
Wow, we're on a winning streak.
Does anyone else have any questions? All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Next, we have Prop B updates with Navigate.
Dr. Dietrich, since the Prop is third out, but can you increase the temperature a little bit?
Are we serious? Are you guys cold?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to update you on the bond projects. The first slide is a status of the approved construction contracts to date, and they're listed. We have added one project that was the repair of the remaining cooler and freezer units. So, the contracts, the amount of approved contracts against the bond issued now, as it stands, at 3.15 million. We are projecting with actual costs, as well as forecasted, to come in under that amount by just $19,000, just under $20,000. And so, that's green, and that's good. Schedule-wise, we're on schedule on all projects, as again noted in the status column, and work has gone well. The next slide is the overall, those are just the approved projects by the board to date. The next slide is the overall status. Our current project total, budget total that we're working is 10.8 million. Again, the approved amount to date. So, we're projecting right now additional expenditures as shown, and that leaves a balance of the remaining contingency of $881,000, just over. That's a combination of the contingency that was budgeted, the remaining contingency that was budgeted, and savings to date on items that have either been contracted or still to complete. That's why we need the contingency. Highlights are in the report, and, you know, the biggest highlight was the soccer field. It's done, and games are being played, and the track now is also complete. At the time we did the report, the striping wasn't done, but it is now done. It looks great. And the remaining work is minor. We have the work on the emergency radio and cellular distributed antenna systems. They were mounting antennas today on the roof, so that's getting very close. And then, the roof work should finish up tomorrow. So, the summer 2025 projects are winding down, and the other project activities are noted. We're now anxious to get started on the design for the summer of 2026 projects, complete design bid, and be ready to go next summer. Pictures are all in the report, and I liked the scoreboard the one the best because it was working. Any questions?
I have some comment. Will you take back to your team how much the soccer team is excited about the wheel?
I got, I got here too late. It was standing room only, but I got, I could watch, I could watch the video. It, it's a beautiful field. We've gotten comments, even from some of the vendors who have come into the suit, like the track striping contractor, he was just very, very impressed, and as they should be. It's exciting to be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have study guidance. So, we have the climbing wall.
Good evening. To start, my son is grounded. So, we're really excited about this opportunity. This is probably, if approved, my next project that will make my son feel like a fifth child. So, the climbing wall discussion, we started in 2020, and in 2020, we engaged with the Anheuser Foundation. In 2022, they gave us $50,000 to hold for this project. Since then, we've also had Corgi and Clark Associates, which was our architect on the middle school, high school, give us additional $25,000. And then, we had Lindsay Reichelt, who is our realtor for two properties that we sold. When she moved to St. Louis, she worked at a climbing gym. She was really excited about that, and part of the agreement was with her was she donated part of her percentage to a project of her choice. When she found that out, she gave us a little over $1,000 towards that project. And then, there was a final account that was a fundraising account that I had when I was principal. So, this all started when I was principal at the middle school, and Mr. Zitzer and I both met and thought that, you know, we know we want this project to move forward. It's very exciting for the community, for the middle school, for the high school, and we've even talked about what it looks like for elementary students because they have the small climbing wall. What does it look like for them to come over and use that facility as well? There's the, the numbers. So, basically, what it comes down to is originally, the ask for this was around $50,000, and that was in 2022. We've got that down to around $18,000, but we don't want to walk into any project without a contingency, so we're going to carry 10% on this one, which is lower than the recommended. Navigate typically wants to carry around 13%. I've worked with the vendors. I feel very comfortable with that number that we'll have to touch little, if any, of that. But again, a project of that size, sometimes you don't know what you're going to run into. So, this funding is actually, we've already received some interest from our bond funds. So, the plan is to use part of those bond, the interest, to fund this. These are the renderings that were provided to us by Eldorado Climbing. We did take this out to bid, and for renderings, Corgi and Clark assisted with this, Navigate assisted with this. We had three different companies come back. I'm sure we had four. One did not meet our specs at all. The other two had some difficulty getting in our price point. But Eldorado specializes in working with schools and bringing gyms or climbing structures inside their price point. So, those are the renderings of that, and I'm here for any questions.
So, I've noticed that Oscar is getting old. For those of you who don't know the tree, does this then replace some of the activities that Oscar, they rely on Oscar?
Yes.
If Oscar is deemed to no longer a viable option?
Well, the tree climbing is run on a self-belay system, so some of the climbing and things like that can be replicated with it, but the tree climbing is actually on a self-belay system, so we can actually work in conjunction with the climbing wall. And in the middle school gym, when we had that being built, we made sure that the steel structures above, that we could actually tie into those, and we can replicate the climbing in the same gym. So, does it add a little bit to it? Yes, but I wouldn't say it takes the place of Oscar. And actually, we have a, I have a meeting next week with an arborist to discuss the life of Oscar. So, I'm hoping they give us another year, but if you've seen Oscar, it's not looking good.
Is the climbing wall, is that, and I don't know if there are communities that have, like, climbing teams or whatever, like, as a sport or extracurricular sport or whatever, would that be tactical enough to compete in if there are competitions?
There are climbing teams throughout St. Louis, at the high school level, some at the middle school level. I know we have at least one high school teacher who's already approached me about what that would look like to start a team. I haven't looked into the rules of that, so one thing, our climbing wall will have self-belays, which, in my opinion, are one of the safest ways to get new climbers on, and even advanced climbers can use them. I would not recommend immediately that we start doing lead climbing and things like that.
Oh, no, as far as, like, whether or not eventually, like, as we grow into a program, whether or not you would need something that was sufficient to?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
How much is in the interest fund so far? Like, what do we have?
I think it was 41?
$90,000. So, it's about a third of it, but we really only want to, we're hoping to only spend 20.
The For Our Resources Committee got a longer preview of this climbing wall and a lot more discussion about it, too. And the board probably would, I think, would be glad to know also about, you've talked to groups that want to use the climbing wall outside, but you've already indicated to them there would be a fee for that. We generally don't charge fees, but because of the, this wall will get damaged over time. It has parts that have to be replaced, and we thought that was a wise course of action to already indicate to those groups that they would, there would be as nominal a fee as we can make to, to be able to use it.
Yes.
And they have to bump staff.
Thank you. Thank you. I should have brought that up. But yes, I've already spoken with Scotty in America and said, hey, like, please understand that you guys are in, you know, section A of our rental, which basically means no charge, but that's like using a gym for basketball, so there's really no significant wear and tear. If we're running the climbing wall, we're going to have harnesses, we're going to have auto-belay checks, you've got rerouting, so all of those things add some cost. So, yes, and they were like, that's fine. We don't have to drive down to Beaumont, we don't have to drive to Esprah. Like, yes, this is, we would, we would be okay with that.
And the other matter is, if we vote to approve this, this would actually be installed before the end of the calendar year and useful already for the spring semester.
Yeah. December 6th would be their start of install. Things would start coming on campus, and they would complete construction the week of January 2nd. So, there would be.
Yeah, Vera, three for three. You've got to send it away next time.
There you go. I'm here for you.
On the middle school account, that's, you said it was funding that you had raised, or is this, I just, I don't, since it's going to be for high school and middle school, so I don't want, you know, Mr. Zitzer back there not having anything left in his fund.
Mr. Zitzer was completely okay with it.
Are we okay? Because I don't want to.
Oh, I don't answer for him, but.
I don't, I don't want to take all your money. Okay. Don't, don't give him everything.
Sometimes new principals come in, and the old principal doesn't get along with them. We have a very good relationship. At least, I think we do.
I didn't want you to strong-arm it up by a grand, so, yeah. Okay. That sounds good.
Any other questions?
Would this need constant supervision, or do kids just need to go play, get to go play on it?
It would need constant supervision. Yeah. And then, we have means of locking it to where people can't climb while we're not in there. So, the mats flip up, they lock in, and then, so.
I know this has been a long time coming, so good to see it have the possibility of coming to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have board policy GVEA.
So, this policy is coming back based on some additional modifications from the board, and so, the updates have been made, and the questions in regards to the policy have also been included. So, open it up for board for additional questions.
I just wanted to say thank you for adding the language about fringe benefits, so that is explicitly stated in the policy. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Next, we have board policy batch 2025B.
So, board policy 2025B includes five policies. I did include an additional quick reference. It's easier to actually look at the policies and see what changes have been made. I added additional note for this particular update just to identify for community what I added an additional note for this particular update just to identify for community what the changes indicate. So the gray highlights are the rationale or explanation. The red or strike throughs indicate that language is being proposed for removal by MSBA. Anything green is new language proposed for inclusion. And if the district is actually making a modification, that will be reflected in blue. So we have five policies. The first policy is EGG, EGAA, copyright compliance. And this particular policy is actually being modified to be reflected as EGAA and updated to align with the Federal Teach Act and also to include a safe harbor for the virtual coursework for instruction. You can see to the right, the modifications that have included. They did add language for the superintendent or designee to monitor district compliance. They added additional language for material otherwise permitted and also removed language around content owner and reasonably believing that the district is using technology to infringe upon copyright compliance. Policy IGBB is programmed for gifted students. The district has a gifted program. This particular policy has now been updated for clarity and brevity. But it also removes the items related to requirements for recommendations for gifted programs being changed. So initially, the language said that it was optional. Now it is mandatory by the State Department. It also included language to identify a designee or coordinator for this particular role and also ensured that language is being communicated out to testing and the identification of students, which we currently do. In addition to including information for district staff and parents and guardians around screening and the evaluation process. Policy KK is in regards to visitors to the district property and events. This policy was updated to include the district's responsibility with notifying of a hearing or giving an appeal process, which currently is not in policy. So they added to adjust and exclusion. And also added a section where the district would have to provide an appeal process up to the board if a person is identified does not have an access to the property or campus. Policy GBE, staff and health and safety, was just updated to remove details about medical examinations for drivers. This is included in the revised statute of Missouri 162.064. So it didn't make sense to actually have it in the policy, so they removed it. And then you can see the language there that is actually been included. Our drivers actually are tested annually as a district. The last policy is policy KB, public information program. This one is directly being modified as a result of M66 standards and the indicators are included. In addition to the indicator for the board, which is L8 for leadership, that basically says that the district has to have a way to have two-way reliable communication with specific information for stakeholders in the community. It also ensures that the district actually has a communication plan and that that communication plan is reviewed annually. And the other added piece to this policy is item number three, where it says district employees will not be disciplined for speech that is protected by law. This particular language also shows up in policy GBCB. So there's some overlap there. That concludes the overview of the policies that are being brought forward for 2025B. Are there any questions that I may answer for you?
Any questions?
So you said that drivers get an annual medical exam?
Drivers are, they get annual exams.
For some reason, I thought it was every two years.
Um, no, annually for testing.
That's the medical exam, not the testing.
I'm sorry.
Medical exam. You said testing? That's the same as medical exam?
Yes.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, next we have admin communications. We have assessment report part two by Rachel Ward.
And while Ms. Ward comes up, this item is being brought back at the board's request. There was a request to see trend data for proficiency as well as comparisons to districts. So we did look at like-sized districts and also included some free reduced lunch rate information so that the board can actually see comparisons across the districts where the comparisons are made.
All right, good evening. My name is Rachel Ward. I'm the coordinator of assessment, data and accountability for the district. And I'm back with more data. So last meeting, we did talk about a lot of data. So I'm here with two different pieces. First is some more historical data. This is just MRH. I also, we also put the all students and the student group data on the same slide. This is not, so the all students includes all students. So the student groups are reflected in that top graph as well. So this is percent proficient or advanced on the spring math or EOC from 2018 up through 2025 minus 2020 because we didn't have testing that year. So you can see the trends and the difference between all students and student groups for ELA. And then we also have it for math as well from 2018 to 2025. Okay? And then these were the districts, and I tried to match their colors because I'm a coach right now. So I know what their colors are, most of these. But this graph is a lot and so, but I just wanted, these are the districts we looked at. Before we get going, though, I couldn't not point out the free reduced lunch rate of these districts when we go back and look at the graph here in a second. So this is from 2024 because that's what's publicly available for our other districts. And actually, all of this data is from 2024 because 2025 will be released very soon, but it's not out just yet publicly. So this is from 2018 to 2024, the exact same data we just looked at for MRH, but for ELA, for all of these different districts. And up there at the top, you will see Kirkwood, Clayton, Ladue, Brentwood and Webster above. So I tried to make MRH a thicker graph with numbers on it or that big blue one in the middle. The districts above us were the ones I just mentioned. And if we go back to the previous slide, you can see where Kirkwood, Clayton, Ladue, Brentwood and Webster fall for their free reduced lunch status. So there's that graph. And then this is for math. Again, MRH is thick there in the middle with the dots and the numbers.
Are these all students on these?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry, this is all students. The further we dice, it just gets longer and longer, more and more. But yes, right now, this is all students. Thank you for that clarification. And it is still grades three through high school. Okay?
The one thing that we talked about last month that isn't in here is the wonky data point that shows the movement of kids who are potentially moving from below basic to basic or basic to proficient.
Yeah, the MPI.
Yeah. I'm not trying to hog all your Thursday nights. I'm just wondering if perhaps we could get something written from you related to that. Again, I, I think that this shows some very important information. I continue to, and I know that it will be highlighted later this evening, a focus on growth. And I mean, as I shared last month, I think there could be a case to be made that it is even more important to show the growth from below basic to basic in those spaces than simply the proficient and advanced.
Absolutely. And the MPI represents, we talked about all students. That does, that number is calculated for all students. And this is percent proficient or advanced.
We're working with the Prime Center to actually pool that data because they have access to more data and they have more people. So they've been a really good partner and that information can come back at the next board meeting.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, next we got building goals update. I don't know, you guys determined your order?
So as the principals come up, just a reminder that this is a requirement under M66 for the board to continue to monitor annually and review implementation of outcomes for continuous improvement, not only at the district level, but just aggregated down to building.
Good evening, everyone. Nicole Huffman, proud principal, MRH High School. I'm going to share just a goal update. We talked last in June about what some strategic shifts that we needed to do and put in place. And so now we're going to share the goals that have been created, kind of modified, tweaked a little bit after we saw our first round of data. And we'll get into it now. So we separated our building goals into three different areas. We have academics. We have our MTSS, then we have our climate and culture and our post-secondary readiness. The first two academic goals that we're looking at, we've identified a growth goal for students in, who are considered in student groups. And then we also identified a proficiency goal. One of the conversations that we've had over time with groups of teachers is that using NWEA as our only data point of meeting benchmark or not is not necessarily good enough for us because we give so many assessments and we have so many measurement points. So this year, as we think about our advanced and proficient and meeting the benchmark, if you will, we're not only going to look at EOC, but we're also going to look at ACT and we're also going to look at AP. So we're really going after those three tested areas. And we'll be using NWEA because we can get a growth goal and we can get a target growth for students on NWA for our student groups to track throughout the year. Climate and culture, again, you will see, very similar to last year, going after a sense of belonging. You've heard VR talk a lot about it and we'll get into some of the specific things that we've been doing so far at the high school. And looking at three specific areas, parents, students and staff. And I have given the average baseline data of all of those questions in those specific areas. And we're really trying to go for a 3.0. So we're looking for a little bit of movement, but I think our biggest thing that we need from parents as we look at this, we need more parents to take the survey. We've got like 35 parents, I think, at the high school that are taking the survey. So we need a lot more parent input there. And really targeting that sense of belonging. We're still working on students feeling as if they're recognized and students feeling as if their voice is heard. We made some really strategic shifts this year and we're still working through that a little more and we'll get into that in a minute. And again, of course, as always, an attendance goal. Excited to report that right now, we are above this at 86% proportional attendance rate. Yes. So excited to our families, our students, our staff, our intervention team for really working hard to ensure that kids know what the target is and to come to school. And I will attribute a lot of it to the fact that we have an attendance incentive for homecoming. So we saw that grow. And then finally, our post-secondary readiness goals. So we're, we've added a metaphor piece this year. So looking at each teacher implementing a metaphor experience, an apprenticeship experience before semester each time. So that's two a year for each of our teachers, looking at 100%, looking for 100% of that. And of course, this is always known, but having 100% at graduation rate. Last year, you'll notice that was a 98.9. Again, we graduated all students that walked through our door in August. However, we do see some of those students show up in our cohort, which are a little bit out of our control, which we talked about in June a little bit. So some of our shifts, we were very strategic with our attendance and our transition. We're still working on that in our tier one supports. We've specifically been working in our grade level meetings with our teachers and looking at each specific student, what supports are they receiving? Do they need additional supports that they're not receiving? And really being able to make shifts and moves there. Really doing some targeted professional development centered around climate and culture, student-centered practices, formative assessment, engagement techniques, the same things that we talked about in June. And using our data to modify instructional responses at the classroom level. Creating a system for increasing student voice recognition and engagement with staff. Community circles, we're working on those, getting those to be liked a little more and more. I think this last time was really good. Each month, we're trying to have our students build relationships with our academic lab teachers. And so there's community circle questions on a monthly basis that they talk about. This past month, we focused in specifically on recognition. And when we had our staff meeting right after, we had some really good conversation about what students were sharing with staff members. Our town halls, really working with and trying to connect our student groups. VR talks a little bit about that, how we're connecting PAL with women who look ahead, with some of our other groups who are really able to help shift the focus and work on that sense of belonging. Implementing Fun Fridays and then defining our metaphor at the classroom level more. So those were our strategic shifts and some of the things that we've been doing within the building and that we're going to continue to do to meet our goals this year. Questions?
I have one question. Will you, I was just curious of an example of what it means for a teacher to embed an apprenticeship experience?
Sure. So this, there's like many different ways that you can do it. Entrepreneurial experiences, client-connected projects, they can have like a job shadowing experience. They can bring in an expert to talk to the class about something. So just recently, the foreign language teachers, the world language teachers, brought in somebody who's working as an interpreter and works within the world language department. She came and gave a talk about what she does, what that looks like, how she helps families. And the kids had a really good like question and answer session with her. So that just happened last Friday. So there's lots of things happening, like Mad City Money just came in for our personal finance classes where the students are, it's kind of like a real life game of life, if you will. So it's an actual experience that students get related to life in post-secondary readiness. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Question about, it says on page two, you have two-point average increase in ACT score. Is this at the junior level, senior level?
Yeah, so every junior has to take a post-secondary readiness assessment with us. So it's either the ACT or the ACT Work Keys or ASVAB. So they have to take one of these or it could be the Accuplacer for STLCC. And so this specifically would be looking at our junior class. Yes.
I mean, a two-point increase.
That's significant.
That's a substantial jump. I'm just wondering if maybe one point would be better to make it so, I guess, more achievable or something. Because looking at the last, I think, five, six years of ACT data for the junior class, which we got in some other document, we're sitting right at 22.3, 22.4, 21.9, maybe over five, six years. So I guess just in wonder, unless you're thinking there's a particular intervention that's being made this year. I just wouldn't, I would just recommend maybe one point increase or even.
Point five.
Half point or something. Yes.
Thank you for that. Yes. Two is a lot. Two is significant. Average is a one-point increase. I think important to know is that as we are working with our students on their post-secondary assessment choices, that we are specifically working with students to choose the test that is accurate for them. And where before, we were testing every single junior. And so every single junior, no matter their post-secondary plan, was taking the ACT. But now we have been more strategic with that. And in addition, we're also working with some of our students and implementing some things during academic lab where we're doing some ACT test prep. We're really trying to help our students close that gap a little bit, especially for our students in our student groups. They just had a meeting recently. We've got some, some great opportunities out there for them. And so I think that we're trying to be really strategic. Does seem like a lot, but I think, I'm hopeful. I'm gonna go for it. Loretta?
Why didn't you start being more focused on who takes the ACT? Is that already in place or that would be in place like this year going forward?
We started last year. So last year was our first year to kind of test it out. And so we started learning more about the ACT Work Keys and what specifically that test is and what kind of information that that gives someone and would give a student for post-secondary readiness because all of this is focused on beyond high school and kind of where the trajectory goes. So we started it last year. So they did fill out a form, students fill out a form. We do a town hall, like a class meeting on it and explain the different assessments to them. They ask all the questions and then we, we ask them to make a selection based on what their choice might be. One of the things that we did notice is that our students who are involved in the tech program are already taking the ACT Work Keys. So this was an opportunity we gave them, we still gave them an option. Some of them chose ACT, but a lot did choose to retake the ACT Work Keys for a higher score because you can get certifications through that. So it's, it's actually really beneficial. So to have that choice in there.
And the timing for the ACT?
April.
And so the intervention programs generally are starting like in the beginning of the year. So they have time to show that effect, but I'm.
Yes. Usually they're about six-week programs, right? They show that's the one that we're working with right now. It's about a six to eight-week program, I think.
And then the ones in school that cover all subjects of the ACT?
No. Very specific. So currently, our ACT prep class has an English focus. So that is only, that's strictly, it's an English teacher teaching it and it has an English-based focus. We do have some other groups that do come in and do, so our junior class will have the opportunity, we bring them all in. Anybody who else who might be interested. Typically, Washington University hosts a special Saturday class for students who are interested. And they will, it's an ACT prep class on Saturdays, which is throughout the, I want to say through the winter months. And then they take the ACT later. And I think some of your children have actually participated.
I just think that having your point of the two points, if you're getting more focused in school online center, is that a harder metric to me.
Yeah. I appreciate your feedback. Thank you.
I ran off comments. So today, actually, Temple Grandin, who's an idol of her, she's one of my idols, was at Fair today and she spoke. And she mentioned that, you know, she wishes that, you know, students could try on careers. So I just wanted to say, compliment our district as being, you know, in that space, right? So that we have schools apprenticeship. She mentioned it falls in line with. She mentioned it falls in line with equity and making sure that students who don't want to go to college can, can try on other things. So I love seeing your goal and, so yeah, just a weird one-off comment. Because I'm still in my like.
Yeah, my question was similar to the question asked already, but around the attendance goal. And just the, I don't know if a 3% increase feels like a lot or a little or, you know, what you think it's going to take to get to that for high school. I don't, I also am curious around, you know, what is, is that typical for high schools around our region too?
Our attendance rate?
Yeah.
Or, I would say yes. When I look at other high schools, yes, there is a couple of high schools who are outperforming that percentage rate, but they're doing some interesting things. But I would, with that 83%, I do think it's achievable. Last year, we set it at 85 and every, every time I'd be like, yeah, we're not gonna make it. But yeah, I would say we're sitting probably about an 82. I think the biggest thing that we're seeing is families taking vacations, right? They're gone for a week. We're seeing lots of like our seniors doing college visits and things like that, which we get. But that does count against attendance. I know we talked about that last time, like you're either here or you're not and that's how this is calculated. Dassie did make a shift and started giving points for students that were here like 85% of the time, 83. So there's like a tiered system of points that are given to students for that, but it's.
Yeah, it's less about points and more about the time, but yeah.
Yes.
I, yeah, that, you know, both are, both are relevant here, so, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
In a college, isn't Rosa Town, the longest time we have off is Christmas and it's a ghost town on campus.
Right. You don't get to see and have the college experience, agreed, yeah.
It's been a missed opportunity, so unfortunately, it's further aligned with times already designated to be off.
I know. As I said, it's a tough one, like I, to catch 22 and.
That is a topic with the Commissioners Advisory Council that I sit on as we talk about attendance. And so most districts, the question that was posed for the high schools are right about where we are. And so we're looking at how do we reimagine what it looks like? Because to Katie's point, it's more about having students in school for the content and not necessarily, you know, for the points. But both are beneficial from a financial standpoint too. So we are having those conversations. We have another meeting coming up, I believe, in December, January, where we actually gave feedback and the Commissioner is supposed to give us feedback on which one she is willing to move forward at the state level.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
I'm Michael Zitzer, I'm the principal at the middle school. That's it for the first slide, okay. So just an update, I know we did a little bit since June, but we didn't have all the data back then. So we had set a goal around 10% increase in proficiency for ELA and math. We didn't quite meet that, but we went up in both areas. Math had a pretty significant growth in 6% and that's with piloting two curriculums, one that we didn't choose. And we still ended up growing. And so I think that's a real testament to our teachers and the work they put into that and our students who, I think, really gave a valiant effort last year. We also had growth in ELA, an area where I feel like we continued to shine the year before. We got all of our points on our APR and then we grew last year as well. Attendance continued to go up, so we, we tied with the elementary school, which is fine, I guess, at 88.5%. We were really, really close to that 90, but not quite there yet. So very proud of our students for coming to school and incredibly proud of our attendance team for, I mean, we're meeting with kids every week, one-on-one. Like we're trying our best to give families and students that being in school is incredibly important and our kids are responding, so we're very proud of them. And then we met on our, our shift in our PLCs, really focusing on those and cross-content teams, which was difficult, they're not all teaching the same thing and trying to move in a direction. We had a building-wide focus for all of them and we were able to make a transition on that particular continuum. And then we set goals around those two, culture and climate things there and we were able to, to meet our goal of a three. We averaged a 3.04, so. In the next slide, I wanted to give the backstory to those two goals because I think in trying to develop goals as a principal and getting to know your staff and the students there, it's really important that they reflect, like who's in the building and what is at, at risk of not being great if you don't put the full effort into it. And so I went and looked at our eighth-grade cohort, who's now ninth graders, and I looked at every student who had a sixth-grade math score through eighth grade. So if we had them here for the full two years, they were with us the whole time, how did they improve? And they drastically outperformed the average of what we have at our building. So their scores are higher than the overall eighth-grade scores. Because when they are in the building for the full two years over the course of that loop, we are seeing that we are successful with them. Students in subgroups continue to go up. Katie asked about below basic to basic, so we went from 12% below basic to six and 11% to three. And so that's a testament to like what our teachers are able to do with a full two years.
Is that written on your hand?
Oh yeah, for sure. It was quick time feedback, I had to provide it right away. And so what that showed us is that students who are transferring into the district mid-loop really struggle. And what we see really big gains from, if there was a math test about belonging or becoming a part of a culture or seeing personal growth, I think we'd be scoring really high, but academically, we are struggling. And so, and then about 85% of the new students who come to us fall into a subgroup. And so our goals are completely around, how are we shifting students within subgroups? How are we seeing their growth? So the state provides you with an individual score based on, so let's say you're base, you perform basic on the math test, you should just get a three. Now it's between a three and a four. So like if you're towards the top end of basic, you get a 3.7, which I think is really fair to teachers because as they're growing students, they can see that actual incremental growth. Instead of just saying, oh, a kid was basic to basic, we get nothing. So I went through and averaged every kid within a subgroup to see what they currently are scoring at. And they're at about a 3.93 in ELA and a 3.74 in math. A four would be proficient. So while we are struggling and there is a gap between our students who fall in subgroups and those who are not, we are nearing proficiency with both of us. So our two goals are around specifically, how are we moving students within subgroups, which I think will also then affect how are we moving students who transfer to us mid-loop. And then I continued with our 90% attendance goal. The current group of students we have are 88.1%, so I think while it is tough, we're going to keep trying to get that extra 2%. We have a similar goal for PLCs because we have switched to content-specific PLCs. ELA teachers are meeting with ELA teachers, math with math, science with science and so forth. We changed our whole schedule to create that opportunity and provide more instructional time for students within their core classes. And then we are, changed our culture goal to specifically improving the one around students are frequently recognized for good behavior. We have historically, for two straight years, scored really low on that. And that is a reflection of leadership probably too. So that was the thing I struggled as a teacher, like how do we authentically highlight students? It doesn't feel like we are like too childish for a middle school kid. Like it has to mean something to them to be praised. And so we had to authentically do that for middle school students. And so we've been taking steps this year to do that. One of the big strategies, and then I'll open up to questions from you all, is the big change to our schedule. I think it is very tough and I'm appreciative of our staff of doing that. They went from having kids every other day and 400 minutes of plan time to having kids every single day and 300 minutes of plan time while also meeting in PLCs and also trying to plan expeditions. So I'm very grateful for them for like trusting us to make that change and knowing that it'll be in the best interest of kids long-term. And then we're using our staff in different ways. So our interventionists, we've restricted who are in classes that are specifically for intervention to narrowing really down to students who have been historically below basic so that students who are closer to grade or might be basic are able to take electives and they're receiving extra support from those teachers in their classes. So Ms. Demison and Ms. Bazan are able to go into classes, they have very flexible schedules. We're using Dr. Graham also to push in the classes. We're trying to use our full staff to meet the needs of students as best we can. We're trying it out, we'll see how it goes. But this is the data specific to how I calculated subgroup versus all of our students in terms of their MCEP score and where our goal came from. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
On this last segment slide, so did you say that proficient is around a four or it varies?
So you get four points for being at the bottom of proficient. So I'm saying that that's what it, yeah.
Okay, so, okay.
So all of our students are performing on average above proficiency in both those areas based on currently, that's their current math scores from the year prior. Yeah.
But it, but it's showing that in ELA, our subgroups are very close on average, right? Is that, you're like your 3.95?
Compared to a four-point, yeah, yes.
So you're getting close.
Yes, as a, as a building and as a district, we perform higher in ELA and we're, yeah.
I just want to make sure I understood it.
Yeah.
So what you're saying is if the MCEP calculation was taken now, it's, we're not hitting the four points, but.
With subgroups, yeah. Yeah. Get closer and closer to that. Yeah, with a clear difference in our math scores to our ELA scores, yeah.
Really, it's not about the score, it's about their, their movement.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, it's just the way to.
That's what we identify.
Yeah. I think one of the things that's difficult is like we always show proficiency and advanced stuff. And so if a student was on the low end of basic and that's the largest pathway on the thing, if they move to the top end of that, we don't see that score posted anywhere, but that is a lot of work for that kid and for that teacher. And so being able to quantify that in a way that like looks a little goofy here, but really means a lot to us, I'm trying to do that.
So last year, I have to refresh my memory a little bit. I remember you had talked to us about a different way you were teaching math or doing math education. There were students, and I know I'm probably going to get it wrong, but there was something about, you know, students at different ability levels were being put into different groups and then there was actually like a second math course or something, is that right?
So we were.
So are you continuing that or with the due schedule, is it?
Yeah, we're trying to embed more of that into, so we used ACT Lab, our advisory at the end of the day to do that. We removed that in terms of like everyone having at the end of the day, so that's being throughout the day for students, just to make our schedule more flexible. But that is, so the same students we would have put in those advisory labs are now tied to additional teachers who are pushing into their class to provide them with support. So you might have been in that class during advisory with Ms. Mackey, but now Ms. Demison has identified you as a student she's pushing in to provide you with support.
So you're staying in the classroom?
Staying in the classroom, yeah, not providing, yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, good evening, Dr. Jamison Superintendent, Happy Bosses Day. And good evening, our Board of Education, all Central Office staff members. I am Carlicia Elam, Principal of MRH Elementary School and Museum. We are really excited about this year. My theme this year is we are better together. And throughout this year, just within the first quarter, we have learned together how much it takes for us to work together in challenging situations as well as celebratory situations throughout this year. So we're really excited about what's to come at the end. We have three goals. Our first goal is centered around attendance. As Michael mentioned, there are different percentage points that help us to get the amount of points that we have and our goal is to have at least three points. Right now, we are leading the district with 91% attendance. And we're really excited about that. And what is crazy is like we talk about all the time, like during our gathering, we celebrate the top three classes. Well, in the last few weeks, they're like 99.27 is third place. And it's like, oh my God, where are we going to get? At first place, 100%? Oddly, I found out a new TikTok trend when I said 99.67%. And I was like, uh, what's going on here? But we're really excited because our students are, and I told them, this means that they're excited about coming to school. Like they're excited about school, they're excited about their teachers. We're building a sense of belonging and all of this helps us to be a better school. So we are continuing with having attendance meetings monthly. Ms. Johnson, our attendance secretary, leads that work as well as having our two administrators, our SEO team and as well as our part-time social worker who is a part of those meetings. We also still provide monthly attendance incentives. So if they have the top, class has the top attendance for the month, they have a popcorn and movie party. So they are really excited about that. And we have a traveling trophy that travels with the students every week as they win. We're trying to figure out, I know people have heard about our house system, but trying to figure out a way to incorporate attendance within our houses so that it can give them points towards their house. So we're still trying to determine the best way to do that, but we feel like that would be a fun addition. We also, for reading, we use our baseline of 68%. What we are finding is as our students start at the elementary and continue on through fifth and sixth grade, the scores are higher in fifth and sixth grade than they are in third grade in reading. One thing that we have that is different this year is that we have our new resource, CKLA. Our teachers are really trudging through, trying to learn and make sure that they are giving their very best, not only as instructors, but also to our students. I will say that there are some instructional strategies and concepts that are being taught that I have not seen at the elementary yet. And so it's exciting to be able to see the students learning things within the literacy block that they hadn't normally learned before. And the students are really engaged with the content and are really excited. I went into a classroom today of third graders, they were like, we're so mad that the story ended. I just didn't want it to end. And so having students just excited about reading, we know that that will increase their achievement level. So we're excited about that. We also still have our reading interventionists who are using 95% group to help move our tier students and the, and impact our RSPs within the building. We also have a consultant that we are working with this year who is working on small group instruction with our entire building, no matter the subject. And teachers are really excited about it to learn the different strategies and resources that they can use to help our students with individualized learning. We also, in math, you see, we're at 53%. One thing that we found this year is that our third graders came in stronger than they have come in previous years. And so we're excited about where they are. And just to continue to build upon that, this is our second year using Alusative Math, which is our math resource that we gained this year. And so we're excited about that. We also have supplemental math teachers who are also remediating and accelerating our students. So one of them was here, she is accelerating students with our 6-7 math program, which is in its second year. And we have two classes of that and we also have, uh, 6-7, is she coming on? And so, and then our other supplemental math teacher is also utilizing Delta Math to work through tier system, which is something that we found by doing our visit to Clayton and talking to their math interventionists. Other changes that we had this year that will ultimately impact in our minds all of these things is that we have our house system. Our house system incorporates a system of belonging for not only just our students, but also our staff. Staff members will only talk to the people on their team because of the way our building is built. And so this allows staff members to be in the building with other students, mixed-age groups and mixed teams so that they can learn more about each other and build a sense of belonging. And we know that when students and staff members feel like they belong, one, our staff will stay. Two, our students will feel excited about where they are and feel comfortable and be vulnerable to make mistakes, take risks, and that ultimately impacts them academically. We also have done some intentional planning with our metaphor because we know that at School and Museum, it is important for us to have our students put their learning on display because it now shows how they can apply it in different ways, the learning that they're receiving in class. So we have been able to go meet with other museum schools as well as go to a museum professional development where we work together with all different museum school all over the United States. And this has helped us to also create a system for how our teachers will be able to facilitate the learning and have timelines and things of that nature. And we have a team that supports that work. Our coaches have been receiving PD on feedback and going through other professional development to help them to be able to help the teachers and give effective feedback outside of what the administrators give. And then we also have changed our testing. We have three testing a year, but instead of doing our third test in April or May, we're going to do it in March. We feel like our students are having, and teachers are having, tested fatigue by the time they have it. And we feel like this would be a great opportunity for our teachers to know where our students are and be able to push them the last month before we have state testing. So many of these things were already mentioned when I stated them. So we're kind of, going to continue to refine instructional practices, have targeted attendance support, enhance our safety protocols. This was within, last year, we had a culture goal centered around sense of belonging, safety and communication. And as a BLT, we realized that due to the data, those aren't as big of problems as we, they previously were. But we still want to make sure that our school is safe and then make sure that we have inclusive data analysis. So our PLC meetings, when we have our data dives after our assessments, we have our SSD team to be able to be a part of those. to be able to be a part of those meetings as well as the SEO, uh, team. That is all I have for this evening. Are there any questions that you have for me?
Um, so on the reading math goals, what would you consider a, um, important improvement? Is it, is it increase? So what would be an important increase? I'm, I'm trying to not say significant as that comes with other connotations for people, but what significance does that?
Well, with, uh, to me, it is important for all students to grow. Um, our, and we are expecting for a hundred percent of our students to show growth within the data, whether it's within their scale scores. And hopefully some of them will move out of their achievement levels. But there are a lot of interventions that we have to put in place in order to get there. Because we have new resources this year, um, there's a part, there's a learning curve that takes place. So I don't, I didn't want to put a specific, a specific percentage on the number because you're out here guessing who will make what goals. And then that's not really something that may or may not be achievable, if that makes sense.
So, uh, I, I don't know, I'm not super familiar with the house system, but is it kind of like what they used to do on early release day? Where you had kids from every grade in like a group and they met the certain teacher, but this is like a larger group maybe?
Similar, we have ten houses. They said it's kind of like, um, Harry Potter.
Harry Potter, yeah.
Yeah, um, every house has their own symbol, they have their own motto chant. Um, they, it helps the students get Lumen tickets. So like if they're fine, uh, found doing the expectations, they're able to get tickets for that. Uh, we also have where they get Ember Awards every week. So it's like student of the week. So teachers are recognizing those students and they're recognized within gathering. So it's like helping the students to realize that it's not just you that makes an impact. It takes all of you guys together to help to make a good community. So yes, you may have gotten a Lumen ticket, but you're putting it in the box that represents your house. Um, and this is something, there is also, if you want to look into it, there is Ron Clark who is in Atlanta. They do the house system. Um, and it is something that has been found to build, uh, students' sense of belonging and like excited about school.
Yeah, it sounds cool. I didn't know, I didn't know about.
And you should see, I think the adults are more into it than, um, the children, and I probably am more into it than anyone.
Well, just trying to make a symbol.
Yeah, and it's really exciting because it's like rep your house. And it's not like against each other, but you're like excited about. And then on our boards within, when you walk through our building, you'll see like all the house points updating every week on whose house is winning with points. And then there's prizes that you win based off of that. So we're excited about our assembly that we're going to have on the thirtieth, um, where all the houses get together and do their chants and mottos and things like that. You all are invited. You're not in a house, but you're invited.
I, I was going to say, I, I think, um, as someone whose child is experiencing the house system, I think what I'm taking away from it too is that this is providing more opportunities for, you know, student leadership.
Yes.
Um, I, my kid is, you know, a fourth grader, but, you know, reporting back around the fifth and sixth graders who are running the house meetings and providing additional opportunities for that, you know, leadership that, you know, again, I, I think it's, maybe Vera can take this as a win back to Talbord too. Then, you know, an opportunity for out, out of school, you know, out of classroom time opportunities seems to be really important.
Yeah, so our house leaders are more like what we would think about as student council, but they work together to come up with different ways to help to make our school better. And then like, we're also going to be doing service projects. So all of this works together with the students in leadership. They run the meetings now, they have an after-school club, and they meet to talk about what will be our house meeting, and we meet monthly.
That sounds really cool.
I will say, my, my fifth grader went from like rolling her eyes at like, what's a house, to now she's, she's super excited. So it's, yeah, you, you've won her over.
Shout out to Erin Cox and Lizzie Uyger who have led the way on that as well.
And the house t-shirts too, I mean, that was.
Oh, there's t-shirts?
Yeah, we have.
There's like colors, it's a whole, it's a whole thing. It's like Harry Potter times ten, because there's genuses.
Right.
I have a question. The, um, from last year, you, um, shared with us the goal for say the star reading would go from seventy percent to seventy-seven percent. Uh, math from fifty-five to sixty-seven. And I'm just wondering, um, so in the report here tonight, now it says the fall baseline of sixty-eight percent. Does that mean we ended last year at sixty-eight?
No, the first star that they took this year, everyone was at six, yes. And things to consider is you lose one class and you gain another one. And so though that data is different. Um, you also have, uh, we had a large number, we had over twenty-seven students who joined our school this year. Um, and so that data coming in, we are like busting at the seams at the elementary school with about a four hundred and forty-eight students, which is the most that since I've been there. So, um, we are, that is the data that we have at the beginning, and our goal is just to increase from there.
What's the, the goal this year to get?
Above sixty-eight and fifty-three percent.
Okay, fifty-three. Did you reach the seventy-seven last year?
We did not.
Okay.
We had a, and what we are noticing is that we have a really large jump at December. And then when we get to our spring test, which is in April, then the scores somehow drop.
Move to March.
Yep.
Okay. Wow, so even, but you know, it, um, where, where did you end up? Cause you, at the time of the report, it was in February, you were at seventy-five percent. Do you remember where, where it ended up?
One second, I have it at my fingertips.
But not on your coat.
Not on my hand, I'm sorry. So.
It's a, it's, it's like you made great steps forward and then it's like with the, you said what, twenty-seven new students or?
That's a whole new cove, yeah.
Yeah, and then you lost a grade.
Right.
Boy, it's a, it's, 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 I guess it's surprising that the number would change so much.
Right.
Um, from the spring to the fall, but I didn't, yeah, that's, that's.
So at the end of the, um, spring, our third graders were at fifty-six, our fourth graders were at fifty-nine. This is, uh, math. Um, our fifth graders were at sixty percent and our sixth graders were at fifty-nine percent. And then for reading, our third graders were at sixty-two percent, our fourth graders were at seventy-one, fifth grade seventy-five, and sixth grade seventy-six percent.
Thank you very much.
And just a reminder that the board members do have access to all of the data dashboards. So each building has a data dashboard, uh, with their data, and that's what we use to track for our.
Good evening. I'm not going to be before y'all long because I'm going to see y'all the next couple of months for preschool. Uh, but good evening, board, uh, central office, ECC parents in the building, ECC parents online. Tenish, Dr. Tenish Estancel, uh, ECC principal. So we'll hop to it. Um, so we have four main goals this year. Um, we are going to be focusing on growth. When we took our star for the first time, for this year, we realized like our achievement is high. Uh, but given our, um, how star is adaptive and goes based on the student against themselves, sometimes if they take a test, the test may not show that question back around. So we're really trying to be very intentional on how we use our data. And I'll get to some of those strategies that we're using. So we are going to be doing growth. Um, and the graphs that I put in the presentation show like, right now, there is not a huge gap between ethnicity of groups. Um, and that's what we love to see. It is a testament of, we took where our students ended last year on growth and kind of use that as our baseline based on how they started this, this year. And then we're just going to move from there. Um, and as you can tell, for two grade levels, for kindergarten and in reading and for first grade in math, we don't have the first time they've taken it because they did not take that particular test last year. So when they take it in the winter, they will finally have their first growth point for us to look at that and actually determine where their baseline will be. But for, um, literacy, uh, for first grade and second grade, that is their baseline to be fifty-five percent, um, and seventy percent. And we are hoping that everyone can get to seventy-five. Yes, for first grade, that is a very rigorous goal. But as my colleagues have said, we are starting a new, uh, curricular resource. It is a learning curve. We're working and supporting our teachers in how they need to differentiate instruction and what does that look like? So we're taking all of that into consideration. For our math goal, um, we have our second graders because they did take the test last year and they were at sixty-two percent. So we're really moving them to get to seventy percent. And when we say all, we are hoping that when we, when you look at the graphs as the year goes on, uh, the ones that are not at the fortieth percentile and up continuously move. And then you'll see another bar, which means those are all new students that have never been with MRH. And we have to get them their second test score to see them grow. Um, again, whereas for some of our teachers, illustrative is new to them. So again, providing professional development, what does it mean to be, what does it mean to differentiate? And we will be working with them on that. Our attendance, dun, dun, dun. Uh, first, I want to give a shout out to all my ECC families. They have really been following our attendance protocol. But we have, you know, we got the littlest of the littles and we've had lice, COVID, strep throat, um, and pentago. I mean, but the parents are going to the doctor, they are following the rules. Operations is coming in, cleaning up our space. Shout out to Vince for, uh, helping us. But they are doing what they can to get their kids well and get them back to school. So, um, the system we used last year for our attendance team, um, is still effective. Um, I just, we just had our next second meeting of the year. And out of last year, we tracked the kids who ended in, um, not meeting their attendance goal. And we've been tracking students that were already low because it was the beginning of the year and kids were getting sick. But out of ten students, eight of them moved back to a good, good place in attendance. So we're just finding ways to celebrate families in that and let them know like, we can't do this without you because it takes you to get them to school. So, uh, our goal is three, um, points again. We battled for those three last year. We hope that it can be a higher percentage. We ended at eighty-six percent, a little bit over, but we hope that it can be higher this year. Um, and our last goal is our culture goal. Uh, eighty-five percent of staff will feel like they fit in amongst staff members at our school, uh, by May. And we took this from the Climate and Culture Survey that Vince had sent. Uh, we talked it over with our builder's leadership team. And, uh, we just came to the conclusion that it really takes all of us, all of us play a part in belonging. It is not just my job, it is not, you know, the assistant principal's job, it's not any of your jobs. It's everybody taking the time to work and say, I want to feel like I belong here. And what am I going to do to be a part of that solution? So we're working on that, um, and then we'll go to the next slide. Those are our four goals. And some of the shifts that we're taking, some I did say this in June, is we're just focusing on growth. How do we, how do we grow students? How do we grow our capacity as teachers? I will say that we do have some of the strongest teachers and that I've worked with. We just have to build capacity. And I'm here to not work against them, I'm here to work alongside of them. And some of that is uncomfortable because I have to hold you accountable, but I'm going to do it because it's what's best for students. Um, so in doing that, providing that support is providing professional development. Uh, we have really been focusing on what does our tier one instruction look like? What is happening in the classroom? Because we can't enter, out intervene tier one. You know, we can't have everybody going to intervention, we can't have everybody being referred to SSD for services. We have to see what are we doing? And I feel like the district has, um, worked with us, whether we wanted two resources or not, not my choice, but I'm living it and I'm working through it, um, to provide tier one resources for teachers. So now it's me helping and my team build the capacity to teach with that. In literacy, we also was able to get the Emerson Grant, which you all are aware of. It's our second year applying. Uh, but the goal of that grant is to provide us, we always say, if we had more time and we had more resources and we had more, we would be able to be on our way. So we applied, we were able to get that this year. So we have some dedicated team members that will help us build a literacy plan this year that will then be implemented next year. And along with that will come coverage if we need subs for that team. Um, and next year will be what does, uh, professional development look like and what is it needed for our teachers? So we're really excited about that, uh, journey we're on. Uh, we're still working with Link STL. Uh, they will be helping us hone in on whole group and small group instruction. So what does it look like when we have all of our students and we're looking at our data? What do they need and what does, what does every child need to move forward and grow, which goes back to our goals? PLCs, strengthening those. Uh, we, we didn't redo anything, we just reviewed everything. Um, and strengthening and trying to give some of that responsibility of PLCs to the teachers. Um, and we rotate them in and out so they can feel like they get help in literacy and in math and project work. And then have time with our NTSS team for students or strategies, uh, for management. Or if you have an issue, you can ask someone for help. Um, we're going to continue working our culture work on belonging, courage and integrity. We've already been through some PD, um, with the help of Special School District. And we are going to continue doing that until our culture is good for everyone. Children at this level absorb what they see, what they hear. We have to learn to work together, we have to learn how to have productive conversations and allow me to lead so that I can move us forward. I'm here to work with them, not against them, and to work alongside of them. So I'm going to keep preaching that. So we're doing some connection activities. We're differentiation, differentiating how we do PD based on, you know, we do technically have one school, but we have preschool, then we have K through two. So if I see some issues coming up or some support that needs to be deployed, I'm really just going to start deploying it towards the groups of people that need it so that we all still move together. And then, um, I would like to give a shout out to our preschool team. They are again tracking their data for three-year-olds and our kindergarten-ready students. So we can make sure that they're going. And the last slide in there had where they are right now and their benchmark. Um, but I have no doubt that our kids will be ready to read and the foundational skills to move to kindergarten. And then lastly, we're going to continue to increase our parent engagement. We're adding a couple of events to target families that don't put their voice in the space for our school and may not feel like they belong. And how can we go to where they feel safe to be able to talk to us about that? Um, and we're working with, uh, partnering with Artists First to do that, which is in our community. Um, and of course, any of the other events that everyone loves to come to, uh, Studio Night, Kindness March, um, Kindergarten Transition Fair. So we're still going to have all of those things this year and just finding a little bit more to reach all families, not just some.
Can you highlight the Emerson Grant? We didn't. It was, it's in the warrant list, and so we didn't, didn't really get the shout out, I think it deserves.
I failed at my job.
We both said we should remind each other to do it, so I'm going to do it now. Um, can you highlight what that was? Cause that's phenomenal, I think the.
The amount.
Right.
Yes, so.
You highlight, you said it does, but how much you actually got.
Yes, so the first year, it's a two-year process. And in the first year, you get five thousand dollars. And that's basically to help cover the expense of subs for your team that are attending. And you have to be committed to the dates that are available. We're with three other schools. Um, and in the second, and then by the end of this year, we will build a literacy plan, which is good. We have our resource, we'll kind of know how that's laid out. Um, and they'll give us some, um, feedback on what are some things we can change to strengthen literacy and actually boost achievement in literacy across all of our grade levels, which foundational literacy is the focus of the grant. Um, and then in your second year, you begin implementation, and that comes with up to two hundred thousand dollars to be used for a set of different things that you need for literacy.
Uh, I know you alluded to this, but I think to put it in more basic terms, I think I heard you say that it is challenging right now because there are two new curriculums being implemented in your building, both math and reading. Are there particular resources that leadership needs to help, um, implement that? I mean, I think we all obviously approved the purchase of those things. Um, we believe that, you know, the standard high-quality curriculum is essential. Um, that only functions if it is top fidelity, which I know, you know this. Um, so, um, again, just perhaps you could talk a little bit more about like how you're trying to solve for that challenge right now?
Yes, so, um, I have been talking with Dr. Jamison and Dr. McGee on just what are the professional development opportunities available for it? Um, of course, our focus was math additional first, and now we had Benchmark. So there just wasn't as much PD opportunity. Um, and I'm still working with them to get additional time and to see what that support could look like. But, um, we've been connected with some districts that are using Benchmark as well. And me and my teaching and learning coach have been like just going through it ourselves. And one thing that I realized was just time. So in Benchmark, every unit is about three weeks, but you do something every single day. So if you miss a day because you're ill, or you have a field trip, or, um, you're, you go on your own professional development, you have to find time to make that day up. So I realized that that was probably, um, a stressor. So I realized that that was probably, um, a stressor on teachers, so just giving them the permission to add a week, so now we have four-week units. Uh, but we have a tracker for PLCs, which tells you when you're beginning the unit and when you're going to end it. So just being mindful to not just say three weeks, like look at the calendar and then go from there. And then with Link STL, there will be time to look at that and look at the different pieces. So the way it's laid out, there's a teacher planner. And then in that it highlights like, of course phonics and phonemic awareness are foundational things for our level. So if you look at those, we absolutely want to get those in every single day because that's how kids become stronger fluent readers. So we're just kind of looking at the resource, and I understand, yes, we're going to teach it with fidelity, but how can I do it without slowing down the process of students? Because the year is going to fly by whether we want it to or not. So it's just, that's our number one solution right now is to give more time. And I think as teachers are learning it, they are getting quicker at it, but it's just the learning curve of learning, the process of the resource.
Yeah, I, and I would note, I think I mentioned, I noticed in your newsletter uh, that you are interested in community volunteers to maybe help prepare materials.
Yes.
And things like that. So in a more public space where maybe there's parents who haven't been in the ECC for a while, or just community members who are at home wondering, maybe I could cut out some shapes.
Cut out laminate, copy. Um, the resource does at our level come with a lot of center work, and you have to create those things. And we hope by the end of the year, they're laminated, so they're sustainable and they last a long time. So if there's anyone that's not on my newsletter that's willing to, uh, help volunteer with that as teachers get into the next units, then we have a system to help then support them.
Do you want them to call your building, or would you rather them call Central Office?
They can send, they can send me an email and I'll add them to my Google list.
We had a debate about this. Who should we be directing, what should we? Sorry. I, I have a question. Um, it's kind of similar to what was going on with the elementary there as well. I, I mean, I guess I'm just so, um, I mean saddened or kind of surprised. The baseline you have for the lit, uh, or, or the ELA for first grade, for example, is fifty-five percent. Now, last year, this, the baseline for that same grade level was seventy-one point six. Um, so, um, I'm just curious, why, uh, why do you think the baseline dropped so much from last year to this year? Or was last year unusual? It's typically around that fifty-five percent, or what, what, what do you think's going on?
So last year we was looking at a different report. We were just looking at overall achievement. Where do you land in your percentile? But this time we're looking at the growth report, which is against the child themselves, not as.
Is it not the same star test?
It is the same star test, we're just running a different type of report to look at the data. So what we often see is when we just look at achievement, we miss the growth of all students. We don't look at that. So when you look at, when we see the, the gaps between ethnicities and grade levels in students, it's because our focus was just on overall achievement, but it didn't account for individual students. It was as a whole. Doing it by growth allows us to measure the child against themselves, not against their peers.
Okay, got it, got it. So then you're just picking up, um, struggles, I guess, that had already been there from kindergarten? And you're trying to?
That is possible.
Yeah, okay.
Because that, that is telling us where they grew from. Um, so, or students who have not taken the test because they haven't been one of our students yet to have a growth point. Also, when they take the test, maybe a question's going to show up and they mastered that standard, but when they take it again, it may not give them that question anymore because in the test, they know it already. So we're just trying to look at it, what is it against the child themselves versus their peers? So everybody's moving together. Thank you all.
Is it okay if I excuse the administrators from the meeting? Thank you guys.
Yes, thank you. Next we have our board budget directive development.
So just to, um, uplift this one, each year the board identifies priorities to fulfill its fiscal oversight role and responsibility. This is also a requirement under MCF six. Uh, we have attached a number of documents for the board, uh, to review. Um, first, the budget directive from last year, this item also was up top of the conversation in the For Our Resources Board Committee. So Trent and Brian, um, have provided notes to actually share with the board as well. So I am here at your request, um, in regards to the starting point for this review. If you would like for me to start with the previous year's budget directive, I am able to do that, or whatever direction the board desires.
I mean, I'll defer to the, I think this is the resources.
One of the things we talked about in the For Our Resources Board was the idea of creating some sort of manage, maintenance or capital reserve fund. And we, I think we're interested in finding out more about those types of funds.
So these are, so you're talking with like this, so just for clarification, we're starting with what your resource committee came out with?
Yeah.
Ideas for our next budget directive for next year's budget?
Yeah.
It was sort of, um, I think we introduced it as a blank slate. So what sort of things would you think are priorities that should be, should be added to the budget directive? On, on the, um, safety issues, one, um, I mean, we'll say, um, Dr. Dietrich, uh, shared with us, I mean, one of the upcoming projects in Navigate, if he's on now, but is a whole new lighting.
Right there, you just can't see.
Oh, no, with the Navigate, Navigate.
Oh, I bet you said Back to Future.
Uh, but there's going to be a whole new set of lighting installed in the district. Um, apparently they did some audit, I, I think Mike can probably correct me, but it was a significant percentage of, uh, exterior lighting around the buildings, especially the elementary school is, is the worst. Um, with that, um, lights are broken, damaged, or just won't work. So, so on some of the safety issues, that's already planned to be addressed in the budget, um, in the bond-funded projects. And just so everybody knows, if, if, um, if we keep it in the budget directive, just know that there's already a plan to address one particularly glaring aspect of that there.
So I guess I'm, I'm curious about the, um, the, I mean, we have stuff that's already allocated, right? We know where we're going to be with salaries, we know where we're going to be with the projects, but I'd like to hear more about kind of what you foresee is a way to, um, can they conserve funds like for this, um, of maintenance of, like for, uh, our?
Reserve, like college to that.
Yeah, like reserve, you know, is that, um, I think before we had a bunch of different buckets where, um, all of our, our operating accounts and stuff, so that would be a separate operating account. Is that something that we're, um, is that going to buck up, buck up with our finances? If it's like a high interest or, um, interest rates aren't hot, but if it's like something that we could be able to put in, um, to, um,
Yeah, some kind of a CD.
Or, yeah, yeah, like that where it's not, you know, immediately liquid, but if it's sort of something where we could, um, because I think you could do it for like months of funding, right? So you could probably do that for five months, even five. Um, or, or whatever, something that, that is where the money's actually working for us rather than just sitting there.
Correct. Yeah, that's definitely. Yeah, that would be, uh, you know, probably, you know, you have an administration question how exactly they invest the funds. But yeah, you know, the idea, there is a line in the school district budget for capital funds uh, that's in the operating budget. I know it sounds, capital sounds like it should be in Fund Four, but it's actually in Fund One. And it'll, and you can drop money into it on an annual basis, and it can just sit there to kind of take advantage of opportunities that come up that were not budgeted for, that something has come up. Um, so when I was at, I mean, just at the MSBA training, for example, they said, you know, typically a district might use it to like purchase a bus or purchase a building, uh, or, you know, a, a house comes up for sale and it's adjacent to a school property. And if you've been dropping, uh, say a hundred thousand dollars into that account on an annual basis for a number of years, you would have that money kind of sitting there. We have not been doing that, and I think we have two former treasurers on the For Our Resources Committee, and both of them just said, this has just never been possible. We are, at least for a few years, I mean, projections are we that will potentially have revenues, uh, not as, keeping up with expenses. But at least for a few years, we do have revenues, uh, potentially outweighing expenses. Um, and so would, it was suggested, um, uh, at the committee meeting that some money be dropped into that account to do perhaps just what you're kind of about. Maybe we don't know what we would use the money for this year, so we drop it into a CD or something. I mean, that would be an administration question.
Would you sort of determine the amount, and obviously it'd be based on need, but like we did that sort of all building audit to figure out sort of what our capital needs will be? I mean, is that, was that, was that the idea, was to sort of look at that and determine, determine what potential?
That's, I mean, I think that's, I mean, Trent had pushed on that. Yeah, I think that's the wise course of action.
Yeah, we, we sort of, we got some numbers on this, it's our annual budget, for maintenance, for us, district of our size, for buildings of our size. Um, and so tried to, tried to reach those sorts of numbers, and that was somewhere in the four, four, five hundred thousand dollar range, somewhere around there. Now, the thing is that you're not going to necessarily spend all that money any one year. Um, the thing that I like about this, or the, just the possibility of it, is that if we don't, we, we go from boom bust type of planning to something where we have some continuous money to keep things going. I mean, for instance, everybody's very happy with the new track, but the track was damaged for five to seven years. And so if we can fix the track and not have to go out to a bond or wait till we go out to a bond, it, it allows us to do some better planning for, um, uh, for maintenance that, that we know is going to be coming up.
It allows them not to defer.
For large projects, you're still going out for bonds.
Yeah.
Um, it is not the way the district has run itself in the past. Um, that, you know, Nelson pointed out that that was, you know, it's just never been the case. Um, and, but it's, it's something that I think maybe we should consider as, uh, directing our resources in Central Office to figure out if this is something that's worthwhile doing. Not saying we have to do it, it's just a budget directive, it's, you should explore it.
Yeah, and what I think that that's a good point, I think that, um, you know, our budget directive probably should, you know, obviously we want to, um, maintain the status quo with a high level, um, curriculum activities, all those things, but at the same time, um, not just, you know, act like a cheetah and, you know, not know what your next meal is going to come, to be storage. Um, you know, and we're interested in cheating, that's.
We have not.
They, they eat like a whole calf and then they will, you know, all the Spanish, they don't know their next meal's going to come. Anyway, would be that, um, you know, it would be good to sort of plan ahead that way. Um, and then also, um, I, I feel like things are getting more expensive, but also there are ways to make things less expensive. Um, you know, where you go, or, you know, what resources we're using, you know, if they're, um, more technologically based than, you know, actual paper piece, you know, whatever, maybe that's a costly. I, I actually, what, what it is, but I mean, you know, that when I was, um, in, in a previous life, I had, um, worked for a library and, um, they were building away from, like they had just subscriptions, like all of this stuff, just constantly updating, all been out all along, right? Um, you know, uh, so maybe that's.
Which are actually usually more expensive than, like, uh, hard copies.
Well, that's where, I guess that's my, that's my point, it's like, you know, where it used to be like, you know, only the big firms had like Westlaw and Lexus, and now everybody's got it. And it's, um, you know, some of that stuff is, um, more accessible, yes. But, oh, I think that our, our directive should be, um, also looking forward to, um, not only what is, um, you know, sustainable, but also what, what can grow, like, you know what I mean? Like the, um, where, where we have facilities that, um, we may not have the, um, the need for something now, but, um, later we could eventually use it for X, Y, Z. Um, but more importantly, um, curriculum stuff, like stuff that we would need to do, where we could, um, make sure that we have systems in place, um, so that it, it's not like we have to ream with the wheel every couple of years with, um, or we can just plug it in, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and I mean, I, I like this idea too because I think when you defer maintenance, it can end up costing more and a lot, right?
Yeah.
So if we have the ability, at least on some smaller things, or to fix them. And so I would be in favor of this being included in a budget directive for us.
Just exploration, and there, there is. It, it also dovetails with the, um, with the Na- Navigate and Gordon Clark effort to have a five-year plan. Um, and so that allows you to sort of look out into the future and understand where, what your needs are in the future instead of just having something break and then have to go and repair it.
Yeah, we've never had that forward look around the, the physical, you know, resources like that.
And then the student mental health supports and hurdles, those are very detailed items. Uh, we did include them since they were mentioned. Um, uh, I don't really have a whole lot to say about them, but, um, and then the other thing that we talked about is flag.
Maybe the hurdles, we were told that the hurdles we have are basically damaged, and they're from almost twenty-some years ago, and we may not even have a complete set or may not have any anymore, and there was some question.
These are literal hurdles.
Literal.
Not figured out.
We have a, we want to cross a hurdle, like buy new hurdles. So what this allows us to do is actually host track events in the spring. So this actually would be something actually to think about for this year. Um, but maybe it's a matter of purchasing some this year and purchasing some more for next year.
And I want to know, we have students on our committees, so I'm wondering if some of these are what our students brought to the table, which I think is great.
She's already got like five.
Not Vera wasn't on this committee, were you Vera, I don't know?
I'm looking for a sixth.
Okay.
I would love to overcome these hurdles to get some.
But the, did, if, was, did the student mental health supports come from students, the request? Or could you explain what they meant by that?
That was Rachel.
What was meant by student?
It was just, it was either maintain or increase of student mental health.
I think it's a matter of staffing at the, each building, like, do we have a full-time person in each building? Who can assist with that?
Assistant mental health support.
It was around that issue.
So, and that one coming up is actually making me wonder about if this is something that's appropriate, maybe not this year, but for future years, to actually solicit each of the committees? Because like, I get that For Our Resources Committee oversees.
Yeah, no, I agree.
The funding, but you, y'all aren't getting the specific presentations on.
I, I'm totally for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Um, I, I did take the liberty as, you know, this being my twelfth budget directive, of providing some thoughts as well, which also, you know, connects with that. I was actually wondering, could you explain a little bit more about the thinking around number five? Um, I think in the experience that I've had, um, we've always named a specific fund balance, you know, percentage as, you know, a, a goal. And again, maybe that's a outdated way of thinking for us, and, you know, with the current realities of the, you know, and I know we don't totally know what our fund balance is going to end up being, or things like that.
Yeah, I think that, I think that was the issue, was that what we were told last year turned out not to be accurate, and then the revenue forecasts already for this year have not turned out to be accurate. So we actually don't know, we know on a month-by-month basis, but we don't really know where we're going to end this year. So I think the idea was, can we, the, uh, I mean, this probably, this came from me, but it was just that we have a revenue surplus projected for this year, not much. I mean, it's less than what we originally thought we were going to have, but can we not have expenditures, um, that out, that, um, that are beyond the revenue? If, uh, just to, you know, that makes sense, we're not spending a lot of work taking in for the next calendar year. We're not doing it this year, and we shouldn't have to do it next year. So let's just make sure, kind of build that into the directive. And we, it, it should be, and, and it was in the previous budget proposal that we had looked at back in the spring, for the next two years, we would be, our expenses would be under revenues. So the idea is just to continue that. Um, it's, it may just be harder because the numbers have shifted so much from last spring to now, which I don't, I, I don't really entirely understand myself. But nonetheless, the idea was that we would benefit from at least another year of keeping expansion, expenses uh, under the, rather just.
So it'd be a target.
As a target, yeah.
Yeah.
But we don't know what the fund balance is.
Yeah, not an absolute, but a target.
Yeah, if you could tell me the fund balance, when just thirty-two percent at the end of the year, then I would say, well, could we target a fund balance of forty-one or a little percent?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Because, yeah, I mean, and yes, I'm not totally, I didn't always agree with the hyper-focus of previous boards on, you know, the fund balance as, you know, as its own whole, you know, number. And I know, again, it does tell us something, there were obviously years where that was really important because it was much smaller and we needed it to float us to pay payroll, you know, until the taxes. And I know, again, it does tell us something, there were obviously years where that was really important because it was much smaller and we needed it to float us to pay payroll, you know, until the taxes came in in January, you know, sort of thing. But, um, that is, um, that is helpful to think about.
So, um, and maybe Dr. James will be able to answer this, um, and do you know if there, did there's anything sort of coming down the pipe from the legislature about anything that we would have to drastic, maybe ban, like, if there was going to be, um, a surge in some other kind of renovation that we've got to do, or something where we, you know, all of a sudden have to send teachers out for additional training? Or which we ought to do, you know, whatever curriculum or anything like that.
Um, at this point, I do not, and we actually had conversations around data tracking, so the state is currently looking at a new data tracking tool that they would actually cover. We talked about unfunded mandates and how to get the department to actually fund the things that they asked us to actually implement within the schools. Uh, right now, there aren't any, but I will say that there are some credible threats, and that's one of the presentations that I'll be making to the board when we think about federal funding. I'll talk a little bit about that tonight when I talk about the budget amendment, um, in addition to professional development needs, and that's one of the topics that I'll talk about when I give my update. One goes for, um, the curricular resources that have been purchased, so I think there are some internal increases that we will see, but really, the external threats are more so related to cuts in funding and any other unfunded, uh, mandates that come through the legislature.
Well, I think to add on to that, I know that coming up is, you know, there's that four, we're expecting about a four percent because of the senior tax freeze too.
Yeah, of course, the senior tax.
Right, so I think number five, we have to tread lightly, I mean, as much as I want to make sure that we're, we're saving, but we don't want to, you know, back and end balancing on everything else, so.
When I guess I think, sorry, Julie.
Sign itself. Oh, no, just, yeah.
That, that almost makes me want to be a little more careful, uh, I mean, clearly, we're going to have to spend what we have to spend, right? But I, I guess, being cognizant over the next year, that funding can be very uncertain, and that as we're doing this, I think that's going to be very fluid, like, to keep in mind. I mean, I like this as a, as a target, as something to keep in mind while we're doing this because of the potential, you know, loss of funding, you know? Even though we don't get a significant amount of our money from the federal government, it's still a lot of money. Like, you know, so losing a half a million dollars is, I mean, that's a lot of money.
But I can give a, a real-life example we'll talk about, we didn't receive the amount of, uh, federal funding that we were hoping, and we had to move money to cover salaries for kind of the operating budget. And so, while it doesn't seem like a lot of money, when you have to do that for several employees, that does begin to, you have to really increase quickly.
I would add one more item to this list, it came up in our meeting, and I, I don't know why I didn't make it here, but, um, there was, um, we discussed something that we've heard in, uh, on the board here that the need for creating salary schedules for administration and making sure that their salaries are, um, at least meeting, um, the fifty percent threshold, if not higher. So, I think, I would, I would think we would want to add something like that to the budget directive.
Katie had that on her.
I have a second.
Yes.
I have a second.
Oh, did I?
My number one, I had like last night or something, I, you know, we sent, um, a few thoughts again, yeah, thinking about, if I'm starting from a blank slate, then what do we need for kids? Um, yeah, this idea of, and it obviously came up this evening as well, um, the curriculum, um, whatever that curriculum is, being able to be implemented. Um, well, I've agreed with the, the social emotional support specifically, I think what I'm hearing is, you know, uh, just significant caseloads for, um, folks. And somebody tonight said they have half a social worker, I was like, oh.
For splitting, because of the increases that the elementary.
Yeah, because, yeah, yeah, yeah. True. Yeah, um, and, um, that, the, yeah, the pay sales, um.
Well, I like the ELA and MAFON too, because I think probably when we were approving those, we probably should have thought about that it, it takes more than just buying a resource, it's, you know, you have to actually learn how to use it, and that takes money too, so I think that's.
Did you want me to go back to the previous budget directive to see what's already there and additional shifts or changes to what's there?
I mean, I would be okay with you taking this feedback, just with what is our, you know, what previous things are and.
Okay, yeah. Because we have a work session, right, I'll be working on the numbers, but I.
I think the one other thing that I'm thinking about, and I don't know that this is necessarily only on administration, but using our equity questions as we kind of consider each of these items, you know, are we really considering, you know, who's impacted? Who may be, you know, differently impacted, and is, are there things that we could do? You know, again, I, I love that the high school is really advocating for themselves, you know, when I first saw, you know.
There's a, there's a bullet point.
Specifically for high school, and then it's like, okay, you know, yes, the track is something that also benefits everyone. Potentially, if we're bringing in revenue, that is also a benefit broadly, it's not simply a, you know, a perk only for the high school, so, um, thinking about that as well.
Well, they used to see kids well, huh?
Sure, I mean, they can just walk right across the street, that's great.
Does anyone have anything else going there? Thank you.
So I'll take the information back and bring something back for work session for the board to react to.
Perfect, thank you. All right, now we are on finance, we have fiscal year twenty-six, such in the financial statements.
I'm back, we still do not have a finance person, so, uh, with the support of Tony and the finance department, I am here to, um, make a presentation. I will say, uh, one of the things I want to talk to the board about is considering another way to present the information, because what I've noticed over time doing this is that the PowerPoint reflects the other document that is included, which is the financial statement, so I'm hoping to get some feedback from the board. Um, so everyone had a chance to, uh, review it, so just in high level, uh, for revenues, um, we've received less merchants and manufacturing funding collections for this year, um, for the budget is actually two percent lower than the, uh, previous year. And, uh, the same is in for, uh, county revenue as well, because of the fines and forfeitures, um, that were not received. And then for state revenue, we are currently seeing a decrease because of the amount of funds that have been drawn down from the CDE grant, which was actually the majority of that, the comprehensive C base education grant. The majority of that came in the last fiscal year, in addition to, um, the cost for lunch and breakfast for reimbursement for the federal funds, and that was, um, part of that includes where funds have to be placed. And then, um, for other revenue, really looking at the negative collection showing due to, uh, the revenue expenses. So, uh, we've expended funds and we are expected to get an insurance check back, similar to, um, the flood over at the elementary school, it's still too soon. Uh, but also seeing that it takes a while for the insurance company to send the check back, so that's why, um, we were seeing that there. For expenditures, um, salaries still trending at seventy percent, seventy-eight percent of our budget, and expenses were about fifteen point six percent comparable to the previous year. I do want to highlight that purchase services are down, um, at this point of the year, about one point eight percent, and supplies are up. Um, because of the way that we have changed ordering and also the check-ins in relation to the budgets, you're finding that the supply orders are actually being purchased when they should be purchased, rather than, um, waiting. So you see that that is actually coming down faster for expenditures that should take place in August and September. Um, lastly, for capital outlays, um, it's comparable, keep it in mind that a lot of those expenditures are coming out of bond funds at this point. Um, that is the general overview for September financials, I welcome any questions you may have.
Questions? Nope, all right. Thank you.
So I do have Tony here, just in case the, uh, board has any additional questions, and, um, I'll go through, uh, with the informations that has been provided. So I spoke briefly about some of the changes as it relates to the, uh, receipt of revenue. And so, in looking at the varying funds for, um, Fund One, uh, Fund Two, and then Fund Three, which is debt service, and then also Fund Four, which Brian talked about a little bit earlier, which includes our bond and capital funds. Based on the feedback in regards to the interest that we've been receiving based on the bond funds, we did, uh, move additional funding, um, from that. So as you look through, uh, the general funds, special, um, special fund, and also capital projects, the current fund balance, uh, where we are prior to a budget amendment is forty-eight point six percent. And, uh, we're estimating, due to some changes in revenue, to be at forty-three point nine percent after the budget amendment, which is about a four point six nine percent, uh, decrease. And so this is resulting in the, uh, senior, uh, tax freeze, uh, information still has not yet been received, we will receive that information sometime in November to give the board, um, more finite view of, uh, how much money we will actually, uh, lose. And also in relation to the decrease in federal funds that we were expecting to receive, that we did not receive. And, um, that also, um, put us in a position where we had to transfer money to cover salaries for those staff members that are being paid out of federal funds. Um, in addition, uh, we saw, um, from the standpoint of, uh, the collection rate for taxes and things of that nature. So, uh, right now, we are, um, monitoring the budget regularly, um, I still have conversations about expenditures, that information is actually shared with the board in regards to purchase services, as well as the purchases for supplies. And, um, ensuring that we are utilizing the funds that the community has provided to us for that. But the general fund has been increased by twenty thousand in the bank interest, based on the question that was provided, uh, from Brian. Um, I am open to answering any questions, but I also have Tony there, uh, with me, who is going to come up if there are any additional questions that the board may have in relations to the, uh, first budget amendment. Also keep in mind that there will be additional budget amendments that will be coming forward to the board as things shift.
And I'm sorry, I think I missed somewhere what specific federal funding is, i- if you know, and, and I'm curious, in my day job, I think there has been some loss of federal funding just outright. And then there seems to be some reissuing of opportunities, if we think that there might be the potential of, you know, es- accessing federal funding through new reworded opportunities under, you know, a current administration.
So, um, I have some notes, but I have Tony to come up and provide some additional context.
Yeah, and I know there is some, you know, some things are actually frozen and some things have been eliminated, and I don't know how that applies in this case.
So I knew, uh, no, one of the notes that was included is that the, uh, the Lord, the CTE grant, uh, was removed, and the preschool state assistance revenue was also a factor in that information.
Was that the state D, oh, was that?
Yes.
Okay. And that's, so that's federal pass through the state.
Yeah, gotcha.
And then, um, it appears that non-certified, but higher certified positions updated federal programs. Do you have any other items, Tony, that you would like to highlight, based on federal funds?
So if you click on general fund, but, um, so for the federal, uh, looks like we got, uh, another Afghan grant this year that added about fourteen thousand dollars, it's, it's a, uh, spend it and get reimbursed. Um, fourteen K there.
And nothing's being reimbursed right now too, or is that why we're taking it out, or it's not?
We're, we're, we're actually adding, we're actually adding it to, expense and revenue, so it basically offsets.
Oh. Okay.
That's one of your purchase services questions. Um, another thing is, uh, Missouri NEA board certification, uh, DESI will reimburse, uh, teachers who get their national board certifications, about fifteen thousand dollars. Um, they got to spend it, and then we get reimbursed, we added about fifteen thousand dollars to the budget, um, expense and revenue. State subsidy, we, uh, we actually, we actually got fifteen thousand dollars last year, and we're actually going to spend it this year, so we're adding it to the budget, we didn't have it as an expense, um, originally. Uh, we added the five thousand dollar, uh, we got an opportunity trust grant last year that we're going to spend this year, or two, or a couple of years ago, we're going to spend it this year, so we added five K to that. That's, that's all the big ones.
Do you guys have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, that's amazing. All right, now we are on more communications discussion, calendar of events, there's no school tomorrow or Monday, so if you don't know that, I'm sorry. For students, for students, yes, uh, that's, I'm sorry for your parents. I do know, okay, so wait, I, oh, I had it, now I forgot, the play starts next week and my child is in it, and now I'm forgetting the name.
The children's.
Thank you, thank you, Vera is in it too. That's, that's Thursday, Friday, Saturday night, you can get your tickets online, they're less expensive if you order ahead. Um, I had some, oh, I do know, there's the Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast is coming up November eighth, is that correct? That's correct, right, yes, thank you, Ed. Um, does anyone have anything else they know is coming up?
There's the trunk or treat, I believe, at the E C C U, they can throw that one out there for our littles, um, it's on the parking lot, uh, same weekend as the play, I believe, correct? And there's also the Scholastic Book Fair, so if you want to shop at the PTO, the Scholastic Book Fair.
Always.
You can buy all the pens too.
Track and field ribbon cutting Friday, the one fourth.
Friday the twenty-fourth, track and field ribbon cutting.
Soccer games as well.
And soccer games?
Senior boy soccer.
Senior night, last.
Five thirty.
Five thirty, senior soccer night. All right, anything else?
I do want to, uh, mention that we have a community conversation coming up over, uh, bullying, so we're doing something different that will be November fourth. And it will be hosted at the high school, so it's a different wide event, and then we will be partnered with the PTO to have some additional conversations within each building. Thank you to Vince and Kayleen for executing that, I just said, made the ask, and they were able to connect the dots and get the people situated, in addition to Ed for pushing the information out once he wraps it up. So, I'm excited about it.
And I'll add that, to lift up the, uh, building principles, so this actually came about from Ms. Elam, actually, to begin with, and then she partnered with Dr. Stansel, and then it came to the PTO, and then I took her from the PTO, I put on my board hat, and then posed it to this level, so, yeah, so this is good. Thank you.
Okay. All right, I think next we have committee reports, and it looks like probably most of us have one, so I'll let the room just go through.
I'll go on for resources, um, you already heard about the budget directive, um, and you heard about safety lighting, um, I don't think people are terribly interested in asphalt and concrete replacement, but I will highlight one thing, which is the seed potato classroom. Um, this will be in the, the elementary school, um, it's had a site survey done, they're going to have a, a incinerator toilet and a water capture system. And the design is being done pro bono by the mayor, and we have a budget of two hundred thousand dollars with a thirteen percent contingency on it, and so it's moving forward, and the work will be completed next summer, over the whole summer, right?
They don't have to walk back inside if there's one outside, so it'll be, it'll be really nice.
Yeah, it is, you know, teach them where does it go.
Exactly.
And it's also to complete the whole cycle of fertilizer to.
Fun.
The college.
I'll, I'll give an update on the Core Health Met on Monday, it's been a long week, I think so, yeah, it's, okay. And then, um, yeah, no, we had some really good discussion on the climate survey, um, we definitely had some great discussion on, um, like, um, suicide prevention training and behavioral threat and all of that. And so I really, shout out to Vince for leading a great meeting, um, and our community members that joined us were fantastic. I, I, that's the first time I had actually, um, been on that committee, well, I was on that committee before, but, uh, first time joining after a while, and, um, I'm more than welcome, more committee, you know, community members to join, but the community, community members that are there are fantastic, so shout out to them.
I, I, I'll go, uh, we had Core People a couple of weeks ago now, um, but it was great because we revisited sort of the end of last year, we started looking forward to this year and identifying different goals to work on this year, and so then this year, we had an opportunity, I know, like, the Mott will go through it, and then we've. And so then this year we had an opportunity, I know, like the Mott will go through it and then we will have to visit it and we shared sort of what we thought, um, were sort of strengths or barriers like to implementing the goal and had some discussion around that. And so that was really nice and I love, we also have, um, a student on our committee that is very engaged, which is also awesome, so I, I enjoy that part of it too. But, um, I don't know, did I, did I get it all? I think there's one more on there.
Yes, so, uh, for our, um, we were.
Help?
Yeah.
No.
Community.
No, that's you.
Community, community. Uh, so we, uh, we're talking a little more about the survey that Ed presented to us last month. And really the goal is to streamline those emails we get. And, um, so he is taking a deep dive and accepts emails that you send going, did you know sleep doesn't work? And various other things that help just fine tune the whole process of communication. Um, and, um, we, we shared the perspective of the overworked parent and where we might want to find information on the website, um, such as the absence recording form, being as easy as possible to find, um, at six thirty in the morning when you're trying to figure out how to report the absence and get, you know, work and life and everything else for you. And so it's a very perceptive to, um, considering that, how that looks on the website and other resources. And then, um, we're just working on some of our strategic plan related goals and trying to, um, think about, um, how that works. Now, a few things of like, um, a few of the goals and what was written at one time and how that would look now and trying to kind of, um, re, re-deshuffle that. And then can I also do my Joe's Place update or is it somewhere else?
Nope, go for it.
All right, Joe's Place, I have props. Uh, we had our disc golf tournament. Um, I say we, but really I was new, um, because I'm just now replacing Jenny's position.
Right, I was, hi, we.
And so, um, shout out to, uh, Dr. Adrian for putting a lot of legwork into getting the disc golf tournament going, um, encouraging his buddies who do play disc golf to come. There were three categories. One was pro, one was Joe, and one was.
Amateur.
Amateur. Yeah, what was Joe? What, what did that, what, how that fit between pro, like.
Pro, Joe is at the, um, so people typically play like once a year and never play. Or play a couple of times a year and never play. Amateurs are people that play on a regular basis and the pros are people that typically are playing in tournaments.
So for those of you who are interested in playing disc golf for the first time or, um, not, not that much, sign up as a Joe next year. It was, um, three people per team. Uh, I didn't notice this because I was working the table, but someone was saying you guys stretch ahead of time. And, um, there were, there were people stretching and really preparing for the athleticism of the event. And, um, people were playing a lot of different discs. I did not realize how complicated it was. Um, we also have logo discs, which is pretty cool. Mellow Mushroom is a great, uh, excuse me, Mellow Disc Golf is a great, um, partner. Uh, also Chartwell's is a great partner. Um, and the event rerused over five thousand dollars. Um, and a few other updates. Uh, our house parents will be transitioning to a new stage in life, uh, in the spring. And so they will be interviewing and selecting new house parents, um, to, um, assume the role in the summertime, preparing for new students in the fall. And, um, we received, um, some, uh, different funding from Citizens Bank, um, Side Foundation, from San Luis County Children's Fund, and from Marion Foundation. Um, and, um, they do have newsletters and if you want some information, uh, please reach out to me or Joe's Place to get on the email list for information. And, um, Jenny Schmidt has stepped down, but we wanted to thank her for her service.
Oh, thank you.
Well, hanging Andrew's plate.
That's one lesson.
If you're a voice scout, that becomes a plate you eat food out of when you have empty dishes. Um, but, or anything else you would like to use it for, it's very handy for many things.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service on board.
Thank you. Does anyone have any other ideas? All right, uh, we have course, role in climate culture. We kept this on here if there's anything.
Yeah, I, um, again, appreciate the opportunity to, um, do a mini lesson last time on, um, you know, some of the, uh, learnings from, uh, the Governance Core book. Um, and, yeah, I, um, it is striking me, you know, I think based on a variety of, of data points and just hearing that, um, the community conversations are going to be focused on bullying. Um, I do wonder if there's an opportunity for the board to also do some, you know, learning about, um, bullying since that is an item that has come up in the state exit, you know, survey sorts of things. So, um, you know, again, I think as Dr. Stansel pointed out, you know, there are different roles for different players in the district around climate and culture. Ours is, um, unique and at a high level, but, um, obviously there's, continues to be things that we can influence and things we can, um, learn about too. So, um, that was, at this point, ends this hour, I think, probably all that I need to say. But, you know, I need to, um, appreciate again that folks, um, uh, took the, the time to read the little passage that I had sent, um, afterwards and look forward to continuing to work on our piece of the climate and culture.
Thank you. All right, next we have action items. Architects Toolbox, may I get a motion?
Motion to approve architects toolbox as presented.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, next we have the board policy, GVEA workers compensation, may I get a motion?
Motion to approve GVEA workers compensation for the policy.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, next we have middle school climbing wall, may I get a motion?
I move to approve the cost of installation of the middle school climbing wall as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Uh, next we have fiscal year twenty-six budget amendment number one. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve the budget amendment, uh, one as presented proceeding.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, next we have mapbook lease agreements, may I get a motion?
Motion to approve the mapbook lease agreement as presented by Dr. Chris McGee.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And then next, I wanted to move to re-enter executive session in accordance with section six one oh point oh two one, subsections one, three, nine, thirteen, and section six one oh point oh two two, the revised statutes of Missouri on October sixteen, two thousand and twenty-five for the following specific reasons, legal matters, personnel matters. Just do we do a roll call to re-enter as well or just be safe?
Mr. Culver?
Mr. Miller?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Roswell?
Yes.
Yes. All right, thank you.